Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Without any objections, order. No? Okay, take a brief recess again. Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, now that we are in motions, I'm in receipt of a letter sent to you by Senator Ben Panglinen, Speaker Ben Panglinen, who is our appropriations chairman, asking your consideration in waiving the public hearing requirement for a bill that he, along with Senator Siniklis, yourself, Senator Munia Barnes, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Adda, Senator Uggan, and myself have co-sponsored, and it's Bill 174-32 LS, an act making appropriations for medical and dental insurance premiums for employees of the executive and legislative branches and for retirees of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2014. And so the Senator requests you to waive the public hearing, and you immediately responded also on the same day, which is today, saying that you've granted the waiver of a public hearing, and that your certification is all that is necessary to make this bill eligible for placement on the second reading file. And so at this time, I move to place Bill 174-32 LS in the second reading file.
During objections, order.
Madam Speaker, and now we can proceed to the second reading file. Madam Speaker, they gotta be a lot faster than this, come on.
Wait, Madam Speaker, we just received this, it was just placed on our desk.
Okay, I'm gonna take a brief recess.
Please, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I procedurally, I know that I've gavelled it in, and I try to be fair with everybody else, and I understand you want to voice your objection, but I've already gavelled it in, but I will let you then at least voice your objection, but it's still ready, carry it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this point, I object to the placement of this bill on the agenda.
Okay, so noted, but it's already on the agenda. Senator Rispio, you're recognized to continue, and that will be noted.
So, Madam Speaker, we're at the top of the second reading file.
So, on the bill that's on the agenda right now is Bill 174-32 LS, and I recognize the primary authors, author, Speaker Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move then that Bill 174-32 be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill number 174 is a very simple bill. It's straightforward. In the entrance of the budget, we fund things within the budget for personnel and benefits and operations required for the government of Guam, departments and agencies, autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies. And one of those benefits that we fund is the health insurance program for government of Guam employees. And there's been questions in the past in terms of the timing of the passage of the budget bill, that what resources are available for the government of Guam program, and what contract can be signed obligating the government of Guam to those benefits and the cost of those benefits. And given that we had done that in the budget bill, but the budget bill has been vetoed, and we are now entering, we wanted to ensure that in the discussion of the budget bill, we're looking for opportunities in which we can find additional resources to meet the needs of this government. And one of the areas that we have been notified on, on where additional savings can be realized by this government, is in the health insurance program. The public law that was passed recently requires that the government of Guam choose the most economical and beneficial health insurance program for the government of Guam and the retirees. And we, in the legislature, received notice from the Health Insurance Negotiating Committee outlining the options that are available to the government of Guam program that were transmitted to both ourselves and the governor. And in looking at the results of the negotiating committee, and if we look at what is the most economical and beneficial program for the government of Guam employees, retirees, and their families, we find that the cost of that program is about $55 million. And that is inclusive of the government of Guam contribution and the employee contribution. So, the cost of the program, if we were to choose the most economical and beneficial program, would actually save us from what was in the budget bill that would allow us then to take those savings and apply them to the other needs of this government, whether that be public health, whether that be public safety, whether it be the HACE study, whether it be COLA at $1,800. The savings that this government can realize in the difference between what was in the vetoed bill and what is the most economical and beneficial program is about an additional $10 million that will be available out of the general fund to be appropriated to meet the other requirements of this government. And so what this bill does is it very simply says that in response to the statute that we have, that we will provide then sufficient funding for the most economical and beneficial program for the government of Guam employees and retirees, save the people of Guam an additional $10 million. And if we then decide to make those savings, we can either just save the money, or we can then apply it to the other needs and the other priorities of this government as determined by this legislature. And so when we look at, as we were arguing or discussing and debating the governor's proposal yesterday under the special session bill or the vetoed bill, that there are still needs of this government that all of us want to fund. I'm hearing, and I'm still very, very adamant, that the retirees need to get back to at least $2,008 for their COLA, so that they can have $1,800. And the difference between what the governor's proposing of $1,500, or I don't know if it's the governor or Senator Adda, because, and I'm just quoting the governor's letter, Senator Tony Adda, because I'm just quoting the governor's letter, he said Senator Tony Adda's the one that wants $1,500, according to the governor's letter. But the difference between $1,500 and $1,800 to the retirees is an additional $2 million. If we fund the most economical and beneficial health insurance program for government of Guam employees and retirees, we will have $10 million of additional revenue that we can apply. And I don't think it's going to bankrupt this government then if we save this money and increase the COLA to $1,800. There's an area where we can find the resources without strapping this government, without increasing revenues, revenue projections, or without cutting anywhere else. We're just providing the funding that somebody has said is going to cost us this much in the program if we choose the most economical investment, if we fund the most economical and beneficial program. So here's an opportunity for us, if we really are committed to finding the resources, if we really think that the retirees deserve that additional $2 million to go from $15 to $18 and not bankrupt this government, we have $10 million available by providing this funding level that will be sufficient. In addition, Madam Speaker, what this means for the retirees is that the most economical and beneficial program funded at a $55 million level will provide a Medicare supplemental program for the retirees. And as part of that, it'll save the retirees about $4 million a year. It will allow the retirees to enroll in a supplemental program that actually then reduces their premium to zero. So we're even helping the retirees a little bit more by funding a program that is economical and beneficial and provides that additional benefit to the retirees. It will then allow the retirees to enroll in a Medicare supplemental program that basically wipes out their deductible, so they don't have to find from the limited resources that they have additional money for their deductible under the health insurance program. That's the benefit of what we are funding at a $55 million level, that is a reduction from the current cost that we have today and the current cost that is both in the governor's budget and in the vetoed budget. So no matter which way we go, either we go with the governor's proposal, or we go with the vetoed proposal and move forward on either of those, putting this in place today, sending it up to the governor, will provide an opportunity for this body and this administration to provide additional resources that can be put towards making our retirees whole, or that can be put towards additional funding for the HACE study, or whatever other opportunity that the governor feels he needs to answer to and respond to in order to ensure that this government provides the services to our general public, whether it be in any other areas of the operational needs of this government and so forth. So, Madam Speaker, it really is very straightforward. It says, "This amount of money is sufficient to fund the most economical and beneficial health plan to the governing Guam employees and retirees, provides additional relief to the retirees in regards to the way the program is structured that would provide a supplemental benefit for a Medicare supplement program for these retirees, that allows them to reduce their out-of-pocket costs, allows them to reduce the deductible, allows them to reduce their premiums." So we are doubly helping the retirees even and at the same time reducing the cost of running the government with regards to providing this benefit for our employees and retirees, and it also then, of course, assists the general public, because it is the general public that pays for these premiums through the taxes. So not only will the premium pocket cost to the employee share be reduced, saving employees and retirees additional money, but it also then reduces the government contribution to the tune of $10 million, and therefore saving the taxpayers that amount of money. And we can then determine what is the best approach for taking that additional savings on the government contribution side and applying it to the needs of this government, responding to the needs of our community and our constituencies, and providing some relief. The bill that either the governor presented yesterday and what was vetoed provides relief for all of the other constituencies within our government. It provides relief to our active government employees, because it provides, either way we go, whether we go with the governor's phased-in approach to HACE study, or we go with funding the HACE study to a level that is sufficient to implement it, and the governor can still choose to phase it in. You know, the governor's saying, "Don't give me $10.9 million for the HACE study, because it's too much money." And we're saying, "I want to phase it in." Well, you can take the $10.9 and phase it in. There's nothing that requires you to implement it fully. It just requires you to submit a program and a plan on the HACE study that can be approved by this legislature and funded by this legislature. The funding level we decided to provide is $10.9. You don't have to spend it all. You don't have to. You can phase it in if you wish. But no, the governor difference is, the governor wants to reduce that and then take that reduction and spend it. And we're saying, "No, we want to provide that so that if we decide, or you decide to move forward..."
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Madam Speaker.
I believe we're speaking on health insurance. I don't see where the HACE study comes in. We're talking about health insurance.
It's the savings on the health insurance and where it can go. And so, Madam Speaker, it is just that. So here's an opportunity. When the governor's saying, "We don't have enough money for retiree COLA," or "We don't have enough money for the HACE study," this bill, by funding the most economical and beneficial health plan for our government of Guam employees, will provide the additional resources from the reduction in the cost of that program to the level then that makes additional resources available to meet the priorities of this legislature, the priorities of the administration. They will be able to work with us on that, and therefore we can move forward in terms of trying to find those areas in which we can then proceed with discussion on the budget bill with the additional resources that we're all looking for to fund what we feel are the priorities of this government. And so, Madam Speaker, I want to, just to ensure, Madam Speaker, that that's really, that it becomes really straightforward. I would also, we put in the legislative intent to give background, but it really is about an appropriations measure. So what I would like to do is that the, since everyone has an opportunity to read the legislative intent and get that background, and really all we want to do is provide the funding necessary for execution of a program that allows us to purchase health insurance services for the next fiscal year, I would then just move to delete the legislative intent and just then have the appropriation level needed for funding of the most economical and beneficial health insurance program for the government of Guam employees and the retirees.
So on the motion then to delete the legislative intent, legislative findings and intent, which is Section 1, page 1, starting from line 2 to page 2, line 1 to 20. So it will be 2 to 13 on page 1, and 1 to 20 on page 2.
Objection.
You object to the legislative findings removed?
Yes, I do. Madam Speaker, I would like to keep it in. I think that it is, it's the story that tells the, maybe it's the complications that I'll point out soon. It's a good idea, but I'm not sure. But objection.
Okay, so there is an objection, and so I'll call for the vote, so all in favor of the deletion of Section 1 in its entirety, please. So, okay, yes, to delete. Motion carries. Speaker, you still have the floor, or are you done?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. I have Senator Duennius and then the Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in a cursory review to say that Bill 174, it's curious at best, simply because we've had 10 minutes to review, but notwithstanding that, Madam Speaker, my major concern at this point, because this may be a very good idea. It might be. The problem I'm having right now, Madam Speaker, is this is the issue we face when we don't go through the public hearing process, and we're here now. I have a document in front of me, which is dated June 20th, 2011, from the Attorney General's office, and it is an opinion that's been rendered with regard to this very activity. And I would like to read at this point, Madam Speaker.
Are you going to read the entire?
No, Madam Speaker. I'm going to just read my concern, because I really think that we should really take a motion after this.
This is 10 pages.
And that, and that basically just deals with the separation of powers issue. "The legislature has plenary or absolute power, which is great, over appropriations, and it may attach conditions upon the expenditure of appropriated funds." Then it goes on to say, "As the legislature's rule, power of legislature and legislative functions, as a general rule, the legislature cannot exercise executive power, and the executive branch cannot exercise legislative power." And then, the real opinion here, and why I'm concerned, is because the Guam Supreme Court has addressed directly the question of whether the legislature can insert itself in the development, negotiation, and execution of contracts, and has held to do so in violation of the separation of powers doctrine. This is very serious, Madam Speaker, and my concern is simply because this appropriation measure, on my cursory review, attempts, I think, to interject the legislature into a negotiation that was comprised of the negotiating team, evaluated, sent up to the lieutenant governor, eventually to the governor for his concurrence, but my understanding, Madam Speaker, in all the dialogue about this issue, is that we don't even have a contract that's been executed yet, Madam Speaker. And the second part is, Attorney General John Weisenberger was very clear to this legislature in a public hearing, which we have a tape of, that all members of this negotiating team are to swear to nondisclosure. So we're moving forward now on an appropriation measure with no public hearing that interjects, I believe, this legislature into the executive branch powers, because this is not in our hands at this point, I believe, because there has to be a consummated signed contract. So, Madam Speaker, at this point, I make a motion that we resolve to the Committee of the whole and bring the Attorney General in to get an opinion on this, to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and also any other members to maybe substantiate the numbers that are put together, because I'm very concerned even how these numbers are derived, because they're supposed to be nondisclosure. So I want to end by saying, Madam Speaker, this may be a wonderful idea, and it may appropriate the money to help our retirees and everybody, but I think we should move with caution, Madam Speaker. I really think we should get the other branch of government in here, or the executive branch, meaning the Attorney General at least, to make sure we're doing the right thing and not violating our separation of powers. We wouldn't want to do that. And also, I guess if we've got these numbers, we should really find out where these numbers are from, and maybe this is going to be something great to send up to the governor. But I say we take that step first, Madam Speaker. So that's a motion at this point.
You're welcome, Senator. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, a couple of years ago, I was the one that sent a request to the Attorney General to ask him for legal opinion on how the then-Governor Camacho could sign a health contract, health insurance contract, and the legislature had not had the opportunity to appropriate for it. Who certified that there, at that point, it was $71 million? I said, "Who can certify that there was $71 million appropriated in the budget?" And that's what we're doing here, is what we're doing here is doing what the legislative function is, appropriating the amount that we believe can and should be spent for health insurance. In the same way that we've been saying, "We want to pay $1,800 for the COLA," they say, the governor says $15, that's the function of this legislature to decide, and that's what we're trying to do, and we're trying to find the money for it. This is a legislative function. I've always wondered how we could go through and pass a budget without knowing how much the negotiating team had negotiated the health insurance for. What if it was $105? What would happen to the rest of the government operations if the contract was $105? The good chairman of appropriations may have put some money in, may have put 74, because that's how much what was last year's. But what if it goes up to $105? Can anybody certify that there's $105 million that's available, I mean appropriated for it? There has to be an appropriation from this body. Madam Speaker, I have, I'm old school. Admittedly, I've been around for longer than many people have been alive in this room, in government. And when I was working for Governor Vidalio 37 years ago, we had a line item veto, I mean line item appropriation. It detailed every single item you could have, you could appropriate for. I mean literally down to the number of pencils you could purchase. That's the way I remember the legislature doing appropriations. So it was a shock to me when I came here and all of a sudden it's, well, give the governor 10%. One time there was a request for 15% transfer authority, and I'm like, "What?" It was unbelievable to me, because that was not the way that I was trained initially in government. When I first came into government 37 years ago, you had a specific amount for everything that you could do. I cost a governor his reelection in Northern Arianas, because I ruled that unless the legislature had specifically appropriated a certain amount of money, that the governor couldn't just decide that he was going to buy furniture for his office or get a new Cadillac for himself, if the legislature had not appropriated for it. And especially not if the legislature had considered it and voted, decided not to appropriate for it. And so I was shocked when I came into this body and found out that you could say a prior year appropriation, I mean a prior year obligation could take us back to 1991, and we could get ourselves into this whole mess that we have with the meritorious bag. So I'm glad that we're finally reasserting ourselves as a legislature and saying, "Of the $580 million that we're going to be spending for government operations this year, this is how much we're setting aside, and this is how much we want to spend for health insurance." Not 74, not 101, not 105, but 55. And since we were successful, Madam Chairman, Speaker, in deleting the intent, and since the...
Motion carries. Speaker, you still have the floor, or are you done?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. I have Senator Duennius and then the Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in a cursory review to say that Bill 174 is curious at best, simply because we've had ten minutes to review. But notwithstanding that, Madam Speaker, my major concern at this point, because this may be a very good idea, it might be. The problem I'm having right now, Madam Speaker, is this is the issue we face when we don't go through the public hearing process. And we're here now. I have a document in front of me, which is dated June 20th, 2011, from the Attorney General's Office, and it is an opinion that's been rendered with regard to this very activity. And I would like to read at this point, Madam Speaker.
Are you going to read the entire?
No, Madam Speaker, I'm gonna just read my concern, because I really think that we should really take a motion after this.
Ten pages.
And that basically just deals with the separation of powers issue. "The legislature has plenary or absolute power," which is great, "over appropriations, and it may attach conditions upon the expenditure of appropriated funds." Then it goes on to say, "As the legislature's rule, power of legislature and legislative functions, as a general rule, the legislature cannot exercise executive power, and the executive branch cannot exercise legislative power." And then, the real opinion here, and why I'm concerned, is because the Guam Supreme Court has addressed directly the question of whether the legislature can insert itself in the development, negotiation, and execution of contracts, and has held to do so in violation of the separation of powers doctrine. This is very serious, Madam Speaker, and my concern is simply because this appropriation measure, on my cursory review, attempts, I think, to interject the legislature into a negotiation that was comprised of the negotiating team, evaluated, sent up to the Lieutenant Governor, eventually to the Governor, for his concurrence. But my understanding, Madam Speaker, in all the dialogue about this issue, is that we don't even have a contract that's been executed yet, Madam Speaker. And the second part is Attorney General John Weisenberger was very clear to this legislature in a public hearing, which we have a tape of, that all members of this negotiating team are to swear to nondisclosure. So we're moving forward now on an appropriation measure with no public hearing that interjects, I believe, this legislature into the executive branch powers, because this is not in our hands at this point, I believe, because there has to be a consummated signed contract. So, Madam Speaker, at this point, I make a motion that we resolve to the Committee of the Whole and bring the Attorney General in to get an opinion on this, to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and also any other members to maybe substantiate the numbers that are put together, because I'm very concerned even how these numbers are derived, because they're supposed to be nondisclosure. So I want to end by saying, Madam Speaker, this may be a wonderful idea, and it may appropriate the money to help our retirees and everybody, but I think we should move with caution, Madam Speaker. I really think we should get the other branch of government in here, or the executive branch, meaning the Attorney General at least, to make sure we're doing the right thing and not violating our separation of powers, we wouldn't want to do that. And also, I guess if we've got these numbers, we should really find out where these numbers are from, and maybe this is gonna be something great to send up to the Governor. But I say we take that step first, Madam Speaker, so that's a motion at this point.
You're welcome, Senator. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, a couple of years ago, I was the one that sent a request to the Attorney General to ask him for legal opinion on how the then-Governor Camacho could sign a health contract, health insurance contract, and the legislature had not had the opportunity to appropriate for it. Who certified that there, at that point, it was seventy-one million? I said, who can certify that there were seventy-one million dollars appropriated in the budget? And that's what we're doing here, is what we're doing here is doing what the legislative function is, appropriating. The amount that we believe can and should be spent for health insurance. In the same way that we've been saying, we want to pay eighteen-hundred for the COLA, they say, the Governor says fifteen, that's the function of this legislature to decide. And that's what we're trying to do, and we're trying to find the money for it. This is a legislative function. I've always wondered how we could go through and pass a budget without knowing how much the negotiating team had negotiated the health insurance for. What if it was a hundred and five? What would happen to the rest of the government operations if the contract was a hundred and five? The good Chairman of Appropriations may have put some money in, may have put seventy-four, because that's how much what was last year's. But what if it goes up to a hundred and five? Can anybody certify that there's a hundred and five million dollars that's available, I mean appropriated for it? There has to be an appropriation from this body. Madam Speaker, I have, I'm old school. Admittedly, I've been around for longer than many people have been alive in this room, in government. And when I was working for Governor Vidalio thirty-seven years ago, we had a line item veto, I mean line item appropriation. It detailed every single item you could have, you could appropriate for. I mean literally down to the number of pencils you could purchase. That's the way I remembered the legislature doing appropriations. So it was a shock to me when I came here, and all of a sudden, it's, well, give the Governor ten percent. One time, there was a request for fifteen percent transfer authority, and I'm like, what? It was unbelievable to me, because that was not the way that I was trained initially in government. When I first came into government thirty-seven years ago, you had a specific amount for everything that you could do. I cost a governor his reelection in Northern Arianas, because I ruled that unless the legislature had specifically appropriated a certain amount of money, that the governor couldn't just decide that he was going to buy furniture for his office, or get a new Cadillac for himself, if the legislature had not appropriated for it. And especially not if the legislature had considered it and voted, decided not to appropriate for it. And so I was shocked when I came into this body and found out that you could say a prior year appropriation, I mean a prior year obligation could take us back to 1991, and we could get ourselves into this whole mess that we have with the meritorious bag. So I'm glad that we're finally reasserting ourselves as a legislature, and saying, of the five-hundred-and-eighty-million dollars that we're going to be spending for government operations this year, this is how much we're setting aside, and this is how much we want to spend for health insurance. Not seventy-four, not a hundred and one, not a hundred and five, but fifty-five. And since we were successful, Madam Chairman, Speaker, in deleting the intent, and since the retiring Speaker questioned where this came from, I'd like to read into the record where this came from, where these numbers came from. These were not numbers, and that was, I was willing to vote to take the legislative intent out, because it's the subjective intent that the author had written into as what his findings were. And depending on which side of the aisle you are, you might not accept it. But I'd like to be able to read what the negotiating team, the numbers, the memo that they sent to us, and I want this part of the record so that it's understood why we're doing this today. This is not something that we dreamt up last night. This was contained in a memo signed by the Director of Administration that was sent to the Governor that was used as the basis for his announcement, and I'm glad to hear that there's no contract yet, because we've not appropriated an amount, and I think it's timely that we do interject ourselves, and appropriate an amount that we believe is the maximum amount that we're going to appropriate for this function. It can't just be left open to wherever you want, and so with everybody, I'd just like to read into the record the recommendation of the negotiating team. It's dated August the fourteenth, to Speaker Judith Wong, Pat 30th, 32nd Guam Legislature, from Guam, Government of Guam Health Insurance Negotiating Team, Subject: Health Insurance Negotiations for FY 2014, half a day. "The Government of Guam Health Insurance Negotiating Team, supported by the expertise of the Hay Group Benefits Consulting Team, successfully completed the FY 2014 Health Insurance Negotiating Process. In accordance with the Group Health Insurance Benefits Law, for employees and retirees found in Chapter Four of Title Four Guam Code annotated, and hereby presents the findings of the Government of Guam Health Insurance Program for FY 2014. This process, as provided by law, required each offerer to submit an exclusive offer and a non-exclusive offer. The exclusive offers assumed that there would only be one insurer providing a single contract for group health insurance made available to government employees and retirees. The non-exclusive offers assumed that there would be up to three negotiated, contracts negotiated for group health insurance. Each of the three insurers were required to offer the exact same plans, but the rates that can vary, but only within a certain parity level, parentheses, provided by the team to each vendor. This will ensure that all vendors have equal opportunity to attract and release. Four offerers submitted both an exclusive offer and a non-exclusive offer. Consistent with the provisions of the Request for Proposals, the negotiating team evaluated the four exclusive offers and ranked these offers. The negotiating team also evaluated the four non-exclusive offers and ranked these offers. Prior to negotiations, one offerer withdrew. The negotiating team proceeded to negotiate three best and final offers for the remaining three offerers for a single exclusive contract. Then the negotiating team negotiated three best and final offers from the three offerers for the non-exclusive contract. Finally, the negotiating team, using the factors identified in the Request for Proposal, evaluated the three best and final offers for an exclusive contract, and ranked those best and final offers, selecting the top-ranked offerer as the one to be recommended to the Governor for consideration. Guam law requires the negotiating team to forward the most economical and beneficial health insurance proposal plan for Government of Guam employees and retirees to the Governor in the form of one exclusive contract and up to three non-exclusive contracts for group health insurance. The Governor must then consider and award an exclusive contract or three non-exclusive contracts. The final results for each of the two approaches are as follows. Number one, current annual premiums for FY 2013. Total premiums for medical drug and dental based on current enrollment are as follows, and these premiums include both GovGuam payments and employee and retiree contributions. Medical and prescription drugs, sixty-eight million, three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Dental, six million, eighty-five million, eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, for a total of seventy-four million, four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. It should also be noted that the above premiums are not final, as both FY 2012 and FY 2013 plan include a, quote, "participating contract agreement," end of quote, that will be calculated and paid out as appropriate at the end of April 2014 in accordance with the current contract. These agreements protect GovGuam from overpayment premiums each year. If there is a shortfall, GovGuam is only required to include the shortfall for the next plan year rates, if they continue with the same vendor. B, plan design improvements negotiated for both approaches. Required as part of the RFP, the team asked all bidders to include in their base price several plan improvements. All of these plan changes have created higher benefits for GovGuam, and then, and their rate adjustment are included in the rates and total premiums shown below. These changes include improvements to preventative care and annual maximums to unlimited as required by the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. Number two, chiropractic and acupuncture physicians will be treated as any other physician. Three, wellness and disease management programs and cash incentives available to all members. Four, coverage of robotic suites as medically required. Five, coverage as added for sleep studies and CPAP machines. Six, the current residency requirement of ninety days has been extended to the IRS requirement of one-hundred-and-eighty-three days. Four, I mean, seven, a fourth drug tier for specialty drugs has been added with a sixty-dollar copayment. Seven, eight, gym membership has been included for all employees and retirees and their dependents as part of the overall benefit program. And nine, for the exclusive option only, please note, this is my aside, but I'm reading this now verbatim, "For the exclusive option only, a Medicare Supplement Plan for retirees over age sixty-five who have Medicare Parts A and B is available. That provides more benefit coverage than the fifteen-hundred and the two-thousand plan as reduced premium costs to both GovGuam and the retiree. Retirees that elect the Medicare Supplement Plan may also obtain dental coverage under the basic plan in order to have both medical and dental insurance similar to the current available options. One additional item needs to be noted that will apply to either options selected. At present, there is a provision in the PAPAC, the Patient Protection Affordability Act, legislation to impose on an employee an annual fee on health insurance premiums effective for calendar year 2014. This fee is to be paid by the insurance companies based on premiums collected. The effective date is yet to be confirmed by the federal government. Guam may have an overriding situation that would mean the payment is not needed at all, since these issues are still unresolved for purposes of the rates and costs noted below. This fee has been excluded." Roman numeral three, exclusive option. "This approach will continue the current exclusive arrangement where only one vendor is utilized for coverage. This approach is accepted, if this approach is accepted, the plan includes: One, all plan design improvements as listed in Section B above; Two, a Medicare Supplement Plan which reduces costs for retirees and Government of Guam; Three, continue the protection of the participating agreements which protects the government by requiring an annual settlement and return of any excess premiums which were paid. The FY 2014 agreement would only require a ninety-day runout of claims and payment at the end of January 2015 instead of April in FY 2013. Additionally, only fifty percent of any deficit would be included in the next year's rate if the same vendor is continued for FY 2013. The participating agreement offered by the exclusive vendor provides a fifteen percent retention rate, allowing the target experience to be calculated by multiplying total premiums earned by eighty-seven percent as opposed to eighty-six percent, and resulting in a higher participating contract rebate for FY 2014, or lower if a actual experience is a negative amount." Next, overall annual savings of eighteen, overall annual savings of eighteen million, seven-hundred thousand dollars from the current annual cost of seventy-four million, five-hundred thousand, which would directly benefit Government of Guam, the employees and retirees financially as well as through improved benefits. And the summary of estimated results are as follows in the chart, and proposed rates are attached, and so in the chart, they show that currently we're paying seventy-four million, four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. The exclusive premiums under the current plan, or the proposed exclusive plan is fifty-nine thousand, sixteen, fifty-nine million, sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars. The sleep apnea would cost two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, seventy-three. The four-tiered specialty drug would cost a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. The gym membership would be six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two, and medical supply improvement, four million, four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, forty-nine, savings of forty-nine thousand. Total exclusive all-in is fifty-five million, seven-hundred-and-three thousand, one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Total annual savings from current, eighteen million, seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. The non-exclusive option, four, "This approach will allow each employee-retiree to choose from up to three different insurance plans while maintaining a consistent core plan design. This approach would include all plan designs as listed above in Section B, eliminate the availability of the Medicare Supplement Plan, and thereby forego reduction of costs to retirees and the Government of Guam by four million, four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, forty-nine dollars. Reduce the overall cost of GovGuam by a thousand, by one million, assuming that each vendor successfully enrolls one-third of the population. However, if the actual enrollment varies significantly from the one-third estimate, more or less costs may have been incurred. Until enrollment is completed, there is no way to estimate the actual cost. Continue the protection of the participating agreement which protects the government by requiring an annual settlement and return of any excess premiums which were paid. The FY 2014 agreement would only require a ninety-day runout period and the payments at the end of January fifteen, instead of FY twenty, as in, instead of April, as in FY 2013. Guarantees fourteen percent retention for each insurer for the plan, and allows for a target experience to be calculated by multiplying total premiums earned by eighty-six percent, and resulting higher participating contract rebate for 2014 for lower deficit or annual experience as if a negative amount." Summary of the estimated cost, and it breaks it down, and it figures that if you have each one of the three, that total one-hundred percent of the current premium is seventy-four million, four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. If we go the non-exclusive, you would have to pay Vendor One, twenty-two million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Vendor B is twenty-three million, five-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, twenty dollars, and Vendor C is twenty-six million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-one. That was their offer, for a total cost of seventy-three million, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Phase four consideration, accepting all negotiating team, accept all negotiating team negotiated terms and rates as submitted. B, maintain the ratio of current Government of Guam employee contribution for both the fifteen-hundred and two-thousand plan. Government should pay, C, government should pay one-hundred percent of the Medicare Supplement Plan F, and reimburse retirees that purchased Medicare Part B and Medicare Part D. Supplemental, similar to the program that reimburses retirees that purchased Medicare B. The total annual cost to purchase Part D and the supplemental plus per retirees is four-hundred-and-sixty-eight. There are approximately eight-hundred retirees currently enrolled in Medicare Part A and B in the health insurance program. Attached is the memo from the Hay Group attesting to the fair and reasonableness of all final negotiated rates. Sinceramente, signed by someone, I guess it's Anthony Bloss, on behalf of Benita Minglotnia. And the memo from the Hay person is, "It has been our great opportunity to again work with GovGuam DOA in this negotiating term to review and assist you in negotiating the options for FY 2014. After review of all the information provided by the vendor, your various discussions and interviews with each vendor, we believe that the final negotiated rates and negotiated plan designs you have agreed to with the insurance are fair and reasonable, given your years of experience, given our years of experience in both business and GovGuam specifically. Please feel free to contact us, the team, if you need any," and that's signed by the Hay representatives. Madam Speaker, the reason why I wanted to read that in is I know that when, not that I would doubt anything that came out of the mouth of Speaker Ben, but I know that people, others may doubt what he was saying, but this just underscores what he was talking about. That we're currently paying almost seventy-five million dollars. The exclusive offer is about fifty-five million. The difference is eighteen million, for both government contribution and the employees, and about eleven million is what the government contribution is that could be a savings. But more importantly, to our retirees, and something that's very near and dear to my heart, as I'm, I guess I might as well say I'm sixty-three now, since sixty-two and a half is unbecoming at this age, I'm almost at Medicare age. And since I first came to this legislature, I have been trying to address a problem that was brought up, of trying to buy into the Medicare program to allow us retirees to go to the Medicare program. Several legislatures, I introduced legislation. Finally, Public Health and Social Services personnel involved in Medicare came down and testified on my bill, and they said there is no need for the Government of Guam to buy into the Medicare program. Any person, any person in the United States can buy into the Medicare program at age sixty-five. The only difference is, is for those of you that have worked in the private sector and have ten quarters, your premium is different from me, who has no quarters, or only two quarters, in the private sector, so my premium's going to be different. But all of us, at age sixty-five, can buy into the Medicare program, it's just a difference in the amount of premium. But a person whose opinion, I, I'll just mention his name, Speaker Sinagastin, swears by the Medicare program. He thinks it's the best thing that ever happened, and he's very fortunate, he's a GovGuam employee-retiree, so he can be on our health care plan. He's also currently on a board, and through his board membership, he's given an insurance company, a premium with another insurance company on island, but because he's But because he's also over the age of 65 and has the quarters, he's able to buy into the Medicare. And he's found that Medicare saves him 900 dollars a month in premiums. And the thing that concerns me about us not taking, the government not taking the exclusive plan here is, one, it does not allow the insurer, the, the, the non-exclusive plan does not allow for the retirees to avail themselves of that savings. And from the reading that I gave you, it saves the government and the retirees over 4 million dollars. The other thing that I want to, to point out is that I was looking forward to going on Medicare, because for those of us that are young retirees, we cannot move to the states. You can't move anywhere, because your health insurance doesn't cover you if you're off island for more than 90 days. And under this new plan that we were just presented, you have to be on island six months. So even if I were to try to retire, I'd have to be here for six months continuously in order to be able to avail myself. A lot of retirees that are living off island right now in the Philippines are going to be shocked that they're going to have to come back and spend six months here in order to be able to continue to have their insurance coverage. But if they had Medicare, they would be able to fly anywhere. I went to an NCSEL meeting a couple of years ago, Madam Speaker, in Louisville, Kentucky. And in Louisville, Kentucky, the Kentucky Retirement Fund, at age 64, starts contacting all the, all the people on their 64th birthday and tells them, "For the next year, we are going to be writing you and writing a herd on you to make sure that by the time your 65th birthday arrives, we filled in all the paperwork so that you can be switched out of our healthcare plan and onto Medicare A, B, D." And it saves the state billions of dollars. But more than saving the state billions of dollars, it allows the Kentuckian retirees to become snowbirds and live in Florida and get their medical care there under their Medicare, under Medicare rather than having to live in Kentucky. That's something that I wish that all of us retirees had the availability, ability to do. But this new plan under the exclusive, if the, if the government chooses the exclusive, is going to deny us that ability. We have now going to have to, where, they're not going to be able to cover that under the non-exclusive selection by the, that's been announced. And we lose an additional 4 million. So Madam Speaker, I hope that reading the memo from the negotiating team clarifies where these numbers are coming from and the amount of savings, that it's not something that the Speaker and I dreamed up. It's something in black and white. If you want to find it and read it yourself, it's on the legislative website under document from negotiating team. Forget what the number is, but anyway.
688.
But it's, it's on the website, and I don't know how many people have access to, but it is important that we, we understand where these numbers come from and the facts, so it's not said that we're making anything up. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, recognize Senator Tonietta.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, not too long ago, we were in this body on Bill 81, which would open up healthcare to all our GOG Guam employees. I'm just confused as to why now we want to put it back to one carrier. Not too long ago, good Senator from Baragada says, "It makes healthcare more accessible to the GOG Guam employee and their families." That's what Bill 81 does. Not in a way it is today. Today, we have a health insurance program, one choice for the government of Guam employee, no opportunity to make any other choice. Every single market of the health insurance has an opportunity to choose, except for the government of Guam. Madam Speaker, in addition to that, it was said that this process, this is a process that will eliminate a monopoly we have in which a single carrier will be the provider of health insurance to our GOG Guam employees. So the only question then is, whose interests are we going to protect? Are we going to protect the interests of the GOG, of the employee? So that they can have a choice? I believe that the interests I want to protect, and I certainly hope that those are the same interests that every member in this body will protect, instead of protecting one single interest. And here we are today with 174 that takes that multiple choice from our employees and our retirees down to a single choice. So what is it we want? We want multiple choice, or do we want a single choice? If you look at Section 2, on page 2, Government of Guam Health Insurance Program appropriation, we haven't even passed the budget yet. And we're already appropriating? We don't even know what the numbers would be. Good Senator from PD brought up very good issues, very good points about numbers, about, and these are, and these are the questions that need to be answered by people that need to come in here when we dissolve into committee at a hall so that we can get those questions answered. Should this bill pass? What would be the ramifications of it? Are we infringing our powers into the executive branch? What are we doing here today? We come into session at 9 o'clock this morning. I got a timestamp of the bill, August 24th at 9:02. I haven't seen a letter for the waiver of the public hearing. What are we doing, Madam Speaker? I understand there is a letter, but I'm saying that we called session for 9 o'clock and the bill was introduced at 9:02. What kind of transparency is that? We're for the employees, we're for the retirees. We want choice, we don't want choice. When the Bill 81 came up to make choice, everyone was down here. We want choice, we want choice. Give us that opportunity to have a choice. Today, we're here with 174 that takes away that choice, takes away that freedom from our people.
Madam Speaker, is this where I remind the good Speaker like you reminded me to kind of stick to the appropriation?
I am on the appropriations. I am on the insurance bill. Thank you, Senator. I appreciate it. So we're going now from giving the people what they wanted, the choice. They opened up so that you can make a decision as to what carrier you want to protect you, to be your health carrier, to coverage you. And now we're, we're just flipping all that back. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I'm really just a concern. I know the Vice Speaker raised some interesting points, but, Madam Speaker, we need to give our people some certainty of our leadership here today. Not another manufactured crisis by this body because of the unwillingness to compromise with the governor. I believe, Madam Speaker, this bill, Bill 174, is designed to drag this budget and create a disaster scenario. The good Chairman of Rules made it clear, what is the rush? We have one month. So what is the rush? I asked yesterday, Madam Speaker, in the letter, that we read it clearly and look out the points there, that what the governor's trying to reach out and compromise. I thought we were coming back for that this morning.
Senator, can please stick to the bill.
I am staying on it, Madam Speaker.
Not to the bill that, from yesterday?
Yes, I am. But I'm just, you could see where we're going with this, Madam Speaker. I think we're all smart enough to figure that, figure that out. I believe that this needs to go to its proper process of a public hearing, Madam Speaker, or bring the proper stakeholders into play so that, Madam Speaker, that we're not going down and exercise, and exercise unconstitutional behavior.
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you have a point?
I just want to make one thing clear, Madam Speaker, point of information. The numbers and the letter that I read was not my letter. That was the letter signed by the Director of Administration. I'll tell you the truth, I didn't understand half of what I read, because I'm not that bright. But I'm telling you, that was their, that was their letter. I didn't make up any of the numbers. I didn't add anything else except read the letter. That is from the administration and from the Hay Group that said it was fair and reasonable and a good negotiation. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you very much.
And so it's from them, not, it's not mine, please. I wish that I could write that well with all that, but it wasn't me, I couldn't even read it well.
Thank you for that information. I would instruct the clerk to make copies then of the letter from DOA to provide for every member in this body. So the clerks, please have copies made then for everybody so you can make reference specifically to the letter, which is from the DOA Director. You may continue, Senator.
So I don't, I'm just basically stating, Madam Speaker, for the record, that we should go through the proper process and bring stakeholders or those decision-makers or to help us as policymakers to make the proper decision. I hope we don't come back here after one day, after one day and try to repeal this whole thing again. So, Madam Speaker, I asked a good author, Baragada, to go back on his statements, Madam Speaker, and allow for transparency of this process, because this is very, a very serious measure. And I, I have read the AG's opinion requested by the former Governor, Governor Guterres. And there it is, Madam Speaker, we need to take this serious. And let's bring, go into the committee hall, bring those folks in, and you know, if this works, it works.
We're not debating on going to committee at the hall. We're on the motion on this bill, so please stick to the bill.
I am, Madam Speaker.
That's the main motion that we're discussing, which is the bill, Bill 174.
So, Madam Speaker, we'll take a one-minute recess.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, whatever the need for the recess is, he can do that offline like the others have. I think we should continue the discussion. So I object.
There's an objection, so, so, I have a long list of...
Madam Speaker, you gave the Vice Speaker a chance to read the whole document. You didn't give Senator Nuenas to read this whole document.
So it is a motion, I'm going to treat it like a motion, so therefore, all in favor then to take recess, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, fail. On the motion then, are you closing up on your discussion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the fairness there. So, Madam Speaker, I, I do ask that our colleagues work together and go through the proper public hearing process to address this important measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator San Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill for the same reason that I rose in full support of Bill 81 that wanted to give choices to our GOG Guam employees, because we knew that the choices were going to create more opportunities. And what is the number one opportunity that we're looking for? Well, there's actually two. The first is we're looking to save money, be fiscally responsible, that's what everyone keeps saying, we're looking to save money. And two, we're looking for the best benefits. Now, when we introduced Bill 81, it did, it did not pass, I'm sorry, it got vetoed and it wasn't able to be overridden. The very senators now who are saying they want choice did not vote for that override. They wanted to protect the exclusive carrier, which is who? Who is the current exclusive carrier? I think my insurance card says Select Care. But now that we have a new exclusive carrier option, we don't know who it is, but it just so happens to be 18 million dollars less with more benefits, now all of a sudden, we have to give choice. The very senators who didn't want to give a choice to protect the exclusive carrier now want to give choice. I seriously doubt, though I don't know for a fact, but I seriously doubt that the current exclusive carrier option that's available to the government is not the same one, because why would the same carrier all of a sudden come in, 18 million dollars less with more benefits? I extrapolate that the exclusive carriers probably take care, because the court went out and got their own insurance and got their own savings and got better benefits, and it was take care. If we're really going to be looking for fiscal responsibility, let's save 18 million dollars, 10 million to the government, 8 million to our people. And let's move forward with this bill. And this savings, Madam Speaker, because it was raised that we're appropriating money and we haven't passed a budget, this is a part of the budget. And this is setting us on the road to compromise. This bill will save us 10 million dollars. Already, the budget that we passed, that got vetoed, that wasn't able to be overridden, was for 797 million dollars, and the governor's is for 811 million dollars. He wants to spend more than ours, but they say it's not fiscally responsible, I don't understand that. But now this bill will further us on the road to compromise. Everyone wants to compromise, and that's what we're trying to do. We want to save 10 million dollars more so that we can finally get our budget bill overridden. We'll save 10 millions that we address that concern of the governor, it's even more fiscally responsible. We'll get the 1,800 to the retirees, we'll pay the Hay, we'll get the merit bonuses So let's stop the, the gamesmanship about whether or not we have the legal authority to appropriate, because that's the basic function of this legislature, Madam Speaker. And if we're truly here in the spirit of compromise, then let's look at these things for what they really are. Not only is our budget more fiscally responsible because it spends less, but this insurance bill is more fiscally responsible because it spends less. The Democrats are fighting for less spending, they're fighting to pay off their obligations, they're fighting for more benefits in the health insurance, they're fighting for less expensive health insurance. That's all the things that we're trying to get compromised into, into the... That's all the things that we're trying to get compromised into the final outcome. Why are we going one way and then going another way and then going one way and going another way, all with the same bottom line of protecting the ultimate outcome that the Governor wants? If the exclusive carrier truly is Take Care, and he wants to protect Select Care, then it's to his interest to say, "Give choice", because Select Care's won the choices, at least they get a piece of it, because they're going to lose all of it. And I didn't want to have to get up and talk about this, Madam Speaker, because I like to kind of not have to go there. But once you bring up why we're fighting for choice then and we're not fighting for choice now, it's because finally, the right choice is on the table. The one that saves more for our government, the one that saves more for our people, the one that gives more benefits to our employees and our retirees. That's the job that we're supposed to be doing. And the amazing thing is, we're not doing anything executive. We're not selecting any carriers, we're not doing any of that stuff. All we're doing is appropriating an amount, an amount based on the letter that came down to us from the Department of Administration. It's our basic function to appropriate. And if we're so worried about doing our basic function because it might infringe on the Governor's powers, my goodness. I'm scared to sit down because I didn't ask the Governor. So, Madam Speaker, let's take everything that we're talking about and be consistent about it. Let's be fiscally responsible and save money for the government. Let's be fiscally responsible and save money for our people. Let's be compromising, and in all these savings, put it into this budget that we want to move forward. And let's get this thing done so that we benefit all of our people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Especho, you recognize.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first, I want to recognize our retirees that are here today. Our Manomko who have come out here on a Saturday morning, where they probably spent this morning with their grandchildren or taking care of things for their family. But instead, they have to be here to witness this legislative process, and I'm happy that they're here. I'm happy to, once again, welcome former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson to this session hall. He certainly has the right and privilege, and we extended that same privilege to former Senator Teletidegui and any other former senator that joins these proceedings. Madam Speaker, you know, the question's been asked, what are we doing here on a Saturday morning trying to address Bill 174-32? Why was a public hearing waived? What is the rush? What is the rush? Well, I'll tell you what the rush is. The rush is to save money. The rush is to save money. And now that our Manomko are here, we have senators who are looking them in the eye and say, "We want to give you a choice." Well, you know what that choice translates to? That choice translates to $10 million additional that would have to be appropriated from taxpayers' pockets. That choice will translate to $8 million that will come out of our pockets, our active employees and our retirees. When the legislature raised issues on whether to go exclusive or non-exclusive, what we agreed to do in that Bill 81 was to have a parallel approach. So you have the negotiating team negotiate benefits if they were an exclusive carrier, then you have the negotiating team negotiate benefits if they're non-exclusive carriers, if there was more than one. And so at the end of that process, you would have the negotiating team make a recommendation on the most economical option to go. And the Vice Speaker read the letter from the negotiating team, and so those numbers weren't made up, Madam Speaker. And so now you have some of our colleagues saying we should put the brakes on what we are tending to do here. Why do they want to put the brakes? Do they want to put the brakes so that way the legislature thwarts it, to thwart the legislative process and our ability to make appropriations for the Government of Guam so that the executive branch can move to sign a contract? We've heard from a senator on the Republican side saying that there is no contract. And then we also heard from the same senator, Madam Speaker, who read an Attorney General opinion. And I'm just, I'm wondering if we could read the same thing and it's obvious that we can come to different conclusions. The opinion that he read from the Attorney General in reference to Public Law 30-227, Section 2, as codified by 4GCA, Section 4302(c)(2), Attorney General writes, "Is inorganic as a violation of the separation of powers doctrine to the extent that it interposes the legislature into the approval and decision-making process of the development, negotiation, and execution of the group healthcare contract by giving it authority to approve either which proposals are to be chosen, leading to negotiating of a healthcare contract, or the terms and conditions of the group healthcare contract. By virtue of the organic act of Guam, these responsibilities are executive functions that properly belong with the Governor." And so maybe it was a mistake to just go straight to the conclusion and announce that publicly, as opposed to just understanding the entire context to which the Attorney General submitted this opinion. The question was whether or not the legislature had the authority to approve the contract. Now, that's where the issue of separation of powers doctrine, and that's where the Attorney General drew the line in the sand. And if our colleagues will just, instead of saying, "I just received the bill, I don't have time to read it", well, we've been here for almost two hours, this bill is not very long. If they read the bill, they would have known that in Bill 174, we're not telling the Governor to go exclusive. We're appropriating the money to fund the health insurance contract. We're appropriating the money to fund the health insurance contract to make $10 million in taxpayer money available for all these priorities throughout the Government of Guam. And we're also doing this to make sure that our Manomko, who have joined us this morning, don't have to pay more for health insurance premiums, are not somehow going to become ineligible for Medicaid. And so, colleagues, when we talked about exploring the options of giving the government choice, we talked about providing a competitive environment so that the healthcare premiums will come down. And we told them to have a dual track in making these determinations. And so now, if the best argument they have, Madam Speaker, is to give employees choice, and that's the best they have? If it would mean having our Manomko pay more for health insurance, if it would mean having them ineligible for Medicaid? Is that the best you have, colleagues, to oppose Bill 174? Not only do you not want to give them $1,800 for cola, and then when you force us to find, deep digger within our pockets, to find some ways to make these things possible, so it's not an empty promise? And I submit to you that substitute Bill 38 is not an empty promise. What do we hear from them, Madam Speaker? "Oh, no, no, now we want to give them choice." What's the rush? Why are we here? Why are we here? Well, why are you here if all you're going to do is defend the executive branch? I'm just sick and tired of this separation of powers doctrine, where we erode our authority as a legislature, and on the very face of it, our authority is to appropriate. And you're going to let the Governor come in here and dictate to you when to leave, when to come, when to stand, when to sit? You talk about being ashamed yesterday for pointing fingers? And you're not ashamed? Colleagues, you're not ashamed? Enough is enough. And as a member of this legislature, I'm going to continue to stand up to protect our institution, Madam Speaker. And I'm grateful that we're in session on a Saturday. I'm grateful that we don't have the media having snippets of what we're doing or what we're not doing, or what we're not doing and they say we're doing. And that's why last night, we chose to ran yesterday's session on our legislative channel. And I thank the Audio Tech for coming in at 7:00 at night, and I thank him for staying until that thing was done, because we have to manually push play and then we have to manually push stop. So now you guys want to push stop? The Republicans want to push stop so that our Manomko can pay more? So that our active employees can pay more? And on top of that, we have a proposal, again, identified as a mover of the proposal, Speaker Ben Tanglinen. We had a colleague yesterday who stood up and said, "I don't care about the credit. If it's right, it's right." We had another colleague from the other side stand up and say, "The Governor's bill's not perfect, but they're willing to vote for an imperfect bill, but they're not willing to vote for our bill." And when I say "our", I say the legislature, Madam Speaker. And if the Governor had let that go into law, that "our" would have included the Governor of Guam. I'm tired, I'm sick and tired of the politics, I'm sick and tired of the grandstanding, I'm sick and tired of the one-otmanship. Which what has it led to? It's led to our Manomko having to come in here on a Saturday morning to witness all of this. And I'm very, very glad they're here. Would they rather be somewhere else? Absolutely. So now, colleagues who said yesterday that they're okay with $1,500, go look them in the eye and tell them, "There's an opportunity to save $10 million", and you know what? I don't believe the numbers. But yet, the numbers came from the Department of Administration. The very branch that is run by your party, not our party. Now you're taking information that's coming from your side and you're saying, "Oh, I don't trust the numbers." But you know what? You know what, Madam Speaker? We had a colleague who said, "Wow, this sounds really, really good. This sounds really, really good. But if the numbers are right, I'm not sure it's right, but it sounds really, really good." What is it going to take for you guys, you guys, to compromise? So I'm not going to compromise on the back of our Manomko. I'm not going to be, like one colleague said, "I'm not going to be a party to any attempt to embarrass the Governor." We never attempted to embarrass the Governor, Madam Speaker. He started it. He started it by telling us, "You guys, you senators..." He didn't say Democrats, he didn't say Republicans. He said, "You senators, give the hard-working GovGuam employees their money. You give them the Hague." His own director, do I need to play the tape? His own director said, "Take the $11 million and pay the Hague." Well, $11 million is full implementation of Hague, right? And so when we said, "What a great idea, Governor. That's what we're going to do." All of a sudden, it's, "Oh, no, 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 we can't do that, we don't have the money." What is it? What is it when he's claimed there's no deficit? When he's claimed that the economy is strong? Where he's claimed that tax refunds are being paid on time? Government is not in the business of saving money when you're not giving all the resources to the people. We are a pay-as-you-go government. Money comes in, money goes out. And where does the money go out to? It goes out to the pockets of our hard-working GovGuam employees, to our retirees. You guys think about it. You know, although my position is Majority Leader, and there's two positions in here of all the 15 seats that kind of give us some leeway in being partisan. The Minority Leader, the Majority Leader. But under your leadership, Madam Speaker, you've really strived to have this kind of bipartisanship where every vote is all 15. It's not really one party over the other. We didn't make this a partisan issue, colleagues. It wasn't us that made this a partisan issue. You were okay with this budget. They were okay until they got the call. Until they got the call to go to Adaloub and figure out whether or not this is okay for the Governor. And now we're going to sit here and be lectured about separation of powers doctrine? You know, I was a product of an administration, coming out of that administration for eight years. But to this very day, I can say that I'm my own man. I can say that no one ever pulled me by the nose ring. And for the record, Madam Speaker, I want to commend the only lady on the other side of the aisle who's not being pulled by the nose ring, that Senator Yamashita. She stayed while the others walked out. And so, Madam Speaker, Bill 174-32 identifies savings. It appropriates money. If they would read the bill, and maybe we can have the Vice Speaker read it for them. It does not say, "Go exclusive." It just merely appropriates the money for the health insurance contract. So when they get up one by one and say, "Oh, we're separation of powers doctrine because we're going to approve the contract in the end." So you want to say, "What is is"? This is what it is. What it is is appropriates money for the health insurance contract. What it is is identifies the savings which the negotiating team pointed out for themselves. What it is, it gives $10 million in taxpayer... And you know, we don't only do things for GovGuam employees and for retirees. This is one opportunity to say, "We do things for all of the people of Guam." Because I'm a taxpayer, I don't see why we have to spend an additional $10 million in taxpayer money. I'm also an active member of this Government of Guam. I don't see how we should pay for higher premiums. And I don't see how our Manomko should have to pay for higher premiums in the face of telling them that they're not worth another $300 a year, a year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes.
Hafadetan Mananasidus, Madam Speaker. Thank you. Before I start, I just want to take the time, and it has nothing to do with the bill, but just take the time to thank my colleagues this morning for blessing me with their beautiful voices and sharing a wonderful gift to me. And if I may, Madam Speaker, I have someone that looks exactly like me, who called me up this morning and said, "What are you doing today?" And she said, "'Cause we, every time, every year this day comes, we spend it together." And I said, "Shucks, I have to go back and do my duty as a public servant because we still didn't go through a budget." And what she said to me was, "Happy birthday, my sister, I love you. Go do the people's will." And you know, that's Donna, always putting me on the right track. You know, Madam Speaker, when I came in here this morning, I was thinking about what happened yesterday and what I talked about and how I said that I really, in my heart, believe that, as Oversight Chair of the committees that I have, that I work closely with the agencies. I meant that. I continue to, you know, work with the Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, work with municipal affairs, work with tourism. And then know that our responsibility, I think our only responsibility is to confirm as an august body and to appropriate. And when I spoke yesterday and I spoke about the numbers and what was coming before us and spoke about checking with the agencies to make sure that everything was intact, I said, "I've got to think of the greater good for the community as a whole." Madam Speaker, one bill went up, it didn't work. Second bill went up, it didn't work. Or went down, didn't work. Came down, didn't work. So we're here again today. We've been at this, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the OAB's office and the staff for all the hard work and the many sleepless nights that they've gone through. I just want to say, "Undunklen, the seeds of small seed for working," because it's not easy. But, Madam Speaker, when I spoke about sincerely giving the Manomko's what they truly deserve because we took it away from them for a long time, this was a brand-new day. And I said, "It's going to be a really happy day" because, you know, I've been blessed to be here for 51 years. And I don't have trouble saying that because my twin sister always reminds us of the blessings that we get from God every day. But there was a bill to save this government, here's a bill to save this government, $18 million and $10-plus million to re-appropriate if this is what we so choose. And I said, "Why wouldn't I put my name..." And I said, "Why wouldn't I put my name on it? If I don't put my name on it, jeez, I'd be crazy." And as I look at Armin Amko right out here this morning, and I've always said, "The greatest generation." Because, let me tell you, I don't think that we would be here. The freedoms that we have today, I don't think that we'd be here if it weren't for them. Madam Speaker, this Bill 174-32 LS is a responsibility that we need to do. If we have to keep hacking at it, we've gotta keep finding that money, we've gotta keep finding those resources, then that's our responsibility as policymakers. That's our responsibility of why the people voted us in here for to do what's best for the community as a whole. And as I look at this Bill 174-32, and as I look... I wasn't a part of the insurance negotiations. And I'm so glad that the Vice Speaker read that. Again. I mean, I read it in my office when we got it, but when he read it, so the people can understand that those numbers didn't come from us. It came from the administration. So as we continue to deliberate on this bill, Madam Speaker, I really do take the time to ask my colleagues to look at the savings that it's going to bring to our people and to look at the opportunities of what we can give back to our Amko, of what they rightfully deserve. But more importantly, the responsibility of making sure that we do our duty as policymakers to appropriate. Madam Speaker, my family asked me to go out this morning and I said I had to... I said, "Antidona called, but I have to go to work." And they said, "Gosh, work again?" And I said, "No, no, 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 no. This is gonna be a different day." Because I know that today is going to be special because we're gonna have dinner tonight. We're probably gonna listen to Jesse and Ruby. But more importantly, we're gonna do right by our people. And Christiana said to me... My granddaughter said, "Grandma, I love you. Have a wonderful day. And we hope your session doesn't take you all day. And I know, Grandma, that you cannot go past 10 o'clock tonight because you already told me that that's the law." So I hope and I pray and I thank all the birthday wishes that continue to come in. But more importantly, I hope that we can also give a big birthday gift to the people who rightfully deserve it. By passing this bill, Madam Speaker, we would do right by our people and find the resources to give all our employees and all the people who deserve to get those resources if we start here by this Bill 174. Sina Massey for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of Bill 174. And I want to thank the author of the legislation for giving me the opportunity and asking me if I could put my initial as part of the cosponsorship. Sina Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Uggan. You're recognized.
Buenas dias and Sizusmasi, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I've been listening very intently to some of the conversations this morning. And I think both sides certainly have unique perspectives as it applies to this legislation. But I want to, first of all, stand up in support of this proposal and commend the primary sponsor, as well as all the cosponsors for initiating it. Because I think that when we look at the overall budget process, certainly it provides perhaps compartmentalized funding to different entities, but it sets a requirement in terms of what the appropriation will be. I just want to perhaps reiterate some of the statements that were mentioned a little earlier. But first and foremost, recognize the healthcare negotiating team because that's the primary reason why we're here. Because they went through the arduous task over the course of the last couple of months, put out the request for proposal, received information in regards to what the best healthcare medical plan and dental plan will be for our employees for fiscal year '14. And in this case, because you've changed seats, Mr. Speaker, what you had shared with us a little earlier specifically provides all those numbers. So I want to recognize their hard work in getting this communication to this body, especially during the course of the consideration of the budget. Because now we're here. We're here to look at, okay, what options, based on the findings of the negotiating team, are available to the people of Guam. One option is obviously the non-exclusive, which would allow for the top three vendors, if I'm not mistaken, to participate over the course of the next year and provide health and medical and dental insurance coverage to the public employees. That option, based on the negotiating team's findings, would realize a $1 million reduction over the fiscal year '13 allocation. The second option, which is an exclusive, and yes, perhaps we're moving in that direction primarily because it's financially acceptable. We have a process, Mr. Speaker, where the negotiating team, based on the RFP, based on the requirements, said, "Okay, these are your offers. We're gonna rate them." And then they came up with a synopsis. "This is gonna cost us or realize a $1 million reduction if we go with the non-exclusive option. But if we remain with the exclusive option of one single healthcare medical/dental provider, it's gonna realize up to $18.7 million." $18.7 million, Mr. Speaker. Of which, $10 million, approximately $10 million, will be realized by the people of Guam in terms of government-sponsored funding. $8 million will be realized in a cost reduction out of the pocketbooks of every single retiree and every single public employee that is participating in the medical and the dental plan. $8 million, Mr. Speaker. $10 million savings on behalf of the people of Guam through government of Guam coffers, and $8 million savings or cost reduction to the pocketbooks of our retirees and our public employees who participate in the plan. I know that these numbers have been mentioned a little earlier, not only by yourself, but a number of our colleagues. But it's a number variable that we need to also look at. Because some of our colleagues mentioned that we need to provide the opportunity for our employees to make that decision. I agree. But when a negotiating team, and I'm presuming in good faith, did a fantastic job, came up with a cost comparison, we need to rely also on the information that they provide. This is gonna realize a $10 million savings for the government of Guam and possibly an $8 million reduction or savings on the part of the employees and the retirees. I look at it from that perspective. But let's take it a little further, Mr. Speaker. And we look at, just so that it's highlighted, again, the non-exclusive option, like you read a little earlier. And I'm just gonna read up excerpts because it needs to be emphasized. The non-exclusive option would eliminate the availability of Medicare Supplement Plan and thereby forego reduction of costs to retirees and the government of Guam by $4.4 million. But the caveat, or the primary phrase there, is it would eliminate the availability of the Medicare Supplemental Plan. That's if we go with the non-exclusive option. In addition to that, if we go with the non-exclusive option, it would reduce the overall cost of GovGuam by $1 million, which I mentioned a little earlier, assuming that each vendor successfully enrolls 1/3 of the population. And obviously, these costs may be variable based on the number of subscribers. But what's even more important, Mr. Speaker, let me also go back to some of the statements that you provided on the exclusive plan. If we were to go with one primary vendor, it would provide a Medicare Supplement Plan which reduces costs for retirees and government of Guam. Let me reiterate that. It would provide a Medicare Supplement Plan which reduces costs for retirees and government of Guam. Wouldn't we want to go in that direction? Where it provides some additional benefit? But then, it all comes down to numbers because of the budgetary consideration. Overall annual savings of $18.7 million from the current annual cost of $74,500,000, which would directly benefit government of Guam, the employees and retirees financially, as well as through improved benefits. Mr. Speaker, isn't that the direction we want to go? Where we reduce the overall costs for the people of Guam on behalf of the government of Guam coffers, reduce the costs of the employees or the retirees who are subscribing for healthcare, medical, and dental insurance, and then, based on this letter by the negotiating team, as well as through improved benefits. To me, that says a lot, Mr. Speaker. It says a lot that we're gonna look at realizing an overall cost reduction should this legislation be signed into law. Cost reduction on the part of the government of Guam of $10 million. Cost reduction on the part of the subscribers. But then, where would those cost reductions go? And it's been said to go to take care of merit bonuses, go to take care of increments, take care of general government operations. But I want to say that when this idea about adjusting the COLA to increase that upward, despite my whereabouts, Mr. Speaker, I received multiple number of calls on a daily basis and texts, and also emails. And a lot of the retirees were obviously not only advocating for an adjustment of their COLA from $1,100 and, as the proposal of the budget bill reads, up to $1,800, but they shared real-life experiences. Their focus was, "You know, we've gone with $1,100 for a number of years, but guess what? The cost of power continued to increases. The cost of water continued to increases. The cost of things out there continued increases, but yet, the cost of living adjustment, the COLA, remained at $1,100." So they were asking, "Could you consider supporting that initiative?" And you know, who's not gonna say yes when in fact, we know that the numbers could conceivably be provided? Based on the budget, if this is gonna realize a $10 million reduction in government of Guam coffers that could be allocated to increase a retiree's COLA from $1,100 to $1,800, then it makes sound financial sense. Because our retirees have gone with a fixed COLA amount and in many cases, a fixed retirement annuity for however many years they've been retired. So if you have a fixed level of income and the cost of water, the cost of power, cost of utilities, the cost of living goes up, guess what? The value of your dollar today continues to decrease while the cost of living continues to go up. And the least we could do is to look at our retirees and say, "Yes. If the funding can be identified, which this legislation provides, an identification of additional resources to help finance the cost of living adjustment from $1,100 to $1,800, if the funding can be identified during the course of the fiscal year, let's include our retirees." Because our public employees, to the greatest extent to so far, has been provided increments. Some, maybe not all at this point in time, have been provided merit bonuses. But where are our retirees? Some of them are in the hallways and I commend them for being here. But many of them are possibly watching what their leaders in this body is gonna do over the course of the next few days in considering the budget. So I encourage all of our colleagues, Mr. Speaker, to look at the cost reduction for our government, but also look beyond that. Where would the cost reduction or those revenues go? Where would they be applied? It'll be applied to our retirees to give them the cost of living adjustment that they deserve and that they need, especially in light of the costs of living going up here in our community. So on that note, Mr. Speaker, I encourage all of our colleagues to consider supporting this initiative. Because yes, it could conceivably result in savings that will go directly to our people, whether they be public employees, whether they be retirees. And in this case, I think the retirees deserve to be part of the overall equation of receiving additional resources from their own government. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Tom Etta.
Sizusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Bunitos ti na inet nun, paga na ogan ni, sinaman danyet sa tahungok to dosya i inasuni i members ginisagi les latura. Nu magahit na kadama soangan pudi amko tumatsuzo sa omko zo luke lakuna shisentai treso pues u ikakau sa nu shisentai kwatruzo. Nu gi tutuhun guaha un membro gini gi otsu banda laknana ti dinansi sti na inet nun sa nu parahafa ni despite the fact na estei speaker adetitmina na dinansi ta para ta diskuti sti na sohetu paga na ogan pudi esti health insurance nu ti contentu nezu debi na tapan public hearing finetna zan todra sa kalan mon ti ma kalan nu hita zan mungwekintusni alu magahit na zan gen mangai gi gi kwatu gi san tati sa edzu na man e internet sa edzu na man ta diskutiti sti gini Bill 174 ngga magai banti ti kalan ti dinansi zu sa ti mapulaaki suzung ni para ma ekungok ni tau-tauta ni ofa sa ma diskutiti lo zigia na mayan motwa gini papa man bakumbida i todi i amko zan ni man ritira gaigina esti na inet nun gini gaigigi television pues zima magahit man intireshau ta nikiu ma tsuli tempo pau ma ekungok pues contentu zu na esti ta tzotugai gini paga na ogan nu dinansi u hongi na dinansi zan ti guahua i mazuria gini sa guaha u nu lakna ayabzektun sa nu pudi nu ti dinansi sti lo ni ma faisin para i botashon i mazuria laknana man contentu ramahongi na dinansi. Pues nu magahit na haga sa mataozungu gini sa siya diu ekungok hafa sa ma sasangan ni pumaalu gini sa magahit u nu nu stau kompendi na na migaina banti magahit ti utungo banti migaina sta nu malefau gini gini i tetinani para matungo pues edzu na zahu na bei ekungok bei pakaka sa bei ekungok hafa sa ma sasangan. Sa maulik na sinet gini man magahit man manhunta ta gini shin ma interompoi hazi komekintus gini sa sinou lakmus na fana zan i hafa malagupo soangan. Gualu ki otsu na membro nu siya dia soangan kalan na kalan na kakasi didi na hafa na estei ma posna gini nu siya it ni para tabota wizi Bill 81 ni para maguaha choice zii, one choice, two choice, three choice. Pues magahit na lo shotumush i latura ma preiba zu nu sa pudi i I guess i i theory behind it zii multiple choice ne na zan ginguaha competition ta nikimash takpapai presyo mashmaulik i hafa sa man ma frefrezi lo talie magahit sa hongan u gina tempo ani ubota zu lo talie magahit sa ugan hu gina tempo ani ubota zu sa uhongi na zangenguaha competition ta nikitumunu ki presyo ta nikimash maolik hafa sa ma frefersi. Lo bulan ezii economic theory guaha lukie zii maaluk underlying assumption. La guana Brian ezii sa i underlying assumption ne ti ti magahit ti man magahit. Pues ezige ne na talie magahit ani guaha nu recently isti in negotiating team ai talie na zangeng ezii una para fanofresi nu kashi disiotsumi dizon minus i gastu kini zangenguahan ezii megay na para ta adzik. Pues ma kustona ne na hafa malagota ko para ta noai i tauti impliau she da ni ritirau nu ezii choice na siyapuma adzik hazi na insurance company pou pou inadahi nishdatniagi mediku needs ko edzu malagota para ta spia zii kalan labaratu. Pues hinshigone ugan dzahu na ti dzahu na pa bi mashanawangi isti puntzogi. Isti enoa nu sina nu tsuli. Ni sita lukie kalan ta na balonsho zu sa zangeng magahit megay na choices na sina pa bi adzik lo mash ni presyo pues anginta atan gi otrobanda hafa ta alu manonai na zangeng una pa bi adzik sa parewa afrefersi maolik sa na benefetsu zan zan banti sina ta oluk mash sa i angeng una na insurance company guaha sina ta participate lukie gi Medicare. Pues ni sitane kalan ta na balonsho zu sa ta oluk na zangeng zangeng maolik au frefersi sa para para adahi nishdottu gi gi zangeng malongu zu lo mash paratu ai de sholu uduzu ta nikine be spia zii ezii labaratu lo maolik lukia frefersi. Pues i i ma sasangan e gini na zangeng zangeng maolik ma frefersi despite the fact na una na sina ne ta adzik pues lakuna ampara guahu go okuna be sa i ta nonai i ni isti ampara una ti kalan mon nu nu ti dinansi zan ti maolik para i tau tau ta. Pues ampara guahu isti magahit maaluk i exclusive ni disiotsumi dizon minus na gastu zan parehu na benefetsu manonai pues lakuna edzu lakuna tasuputi. Pues ti ti megay pa bisangan feria di you know, ma keke ma keke nu ma confuse isu ni kaof malagomuk pa ta noai tau tau ta nu para sina ma adzik pa ta noai ni una lo i ma frefersi parewa enti magahit na banti mash maolik engi ni una ta ofresi lo nu ampara guahu be suputi isti Bill one seventy-four dash thirty-two sa gi inasoku uhongi na maolik para i tau tau ta, maolik para i manomko, maolik para ezii sa i impliau ni gubetnu ni mangai giagia gini sa ta sina ta azuda. Pues ezii disiotsumi dizon ni sina minus na gastu actually dash dizon para para inapa sina i gubetnu sina ta porlu zu gi umbanda sa siya guaha zii maaluk ti sina ta noai COLA i manomko ne ezii eighteen hundred dollars ta tinahung salapi pues guaha ne gini gi dash dizon sina ta 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 noai dididip para na kabalis ezii eighteen hundred dollars. Lakne gubetnu na ti sina ta implementai he sa ta adza salapi pues guaha ne lukis ti is i sebla na salapi sina lukie ma usapetu. Guaha ezii maohauhau na ni sita mash pulisia ni sita ta 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 noai mash ikoti sa salapi. Pues zangeng magahit ne na guaha sa ti manonahung pues guaha ne dash dizon sina na na posiblai isti Bill one seventy-four ni sina ta ta spia edzu sa ne nishdat. Pues gi inasoku kalan nu gui zasi maaluk eziggi finanglish ezii no-brainer ne. Pues nu nu kalan magahit nu maolik isti na Bill za u shopuputi sa u shodzu lukie sa i i members ginisana halum zo zo ma ma suputi isti na Bill, sidoz maashe.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lim Tiaco, followed by Senator McCready, and then Speaker Wambat.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Speaker, I've had the opportunity to listen to all the arguments and read the bill and try and just get my head around everything that it covers. And I guess, you know, there's a couple of points that I have that I'd like to try and make and just at least voice my concerns. And the first one is this whole idea about this health insurance procurement. And if we look in the last six months of our newspapers and we take a look at what we see most often, we constantly see these protests regarding the procurement. In fact, the initial procurement on this health insurance is is what led to this current negotiation. There was a protest that resulted in the continuation of the health insurance plan that basically forced the team to go back and renegotiate. And so my concerns regarding this bill, and they're just questions as well as concerns, is that whether or not what we're attempting to do in this bill, despite the pros and cons of what the previous speakers have alluded to, is that we may be setting ourselves up for a repeat of what happened in the first attempt to procure health insurance. Now, I know a couple of our senators in this body are taking procurement courses and I'm sure they understand that I think what this bill is attempting to do is intervene in that process. I know it's a question that should be asked and I support another senator's motion to convene as a committee of a whole because we really do need to get that question asked and answered. Because if it truly is intervening in the procurement of the health insurance negotiations, which by law, this body set up a law to allow the negotiating team to do such and gave the or the authority to decide on on which health insurance contracts the governor chooses to elect, I think there is a huge question of whether or not we are attempting to intervene in this procurement process. And if we just take that on its whole and we look back and we see how many of our on-island vendors have gone through this process only to have to get protested and go back and do everything all over again, it just drives cost into the system in its entirety. Because there's a lot of time and a lot of money associated with putting these bid packets together. And every time this happens, these companies basically are going to build that cost into every bid that they provide for this government. You know, we don't have to look too far in the past to see when no insurance companies wanted to do business with the government of Guam. It just was a losing proposition. And so what happened when people decided to come back? Well, they raised their rates to hedge off that risk. Now, I know that recently, the health insurance premiums are starting to come down, but still, they're pretty high. That's because of what we've done in the past. This bill is just repeating the mistakes of the past, I believe. And it's just going to throw another monkey wrench into the entire system. Now, it's my understanding that notice of awards have been sent to three companies. I'm not sure. And once again, this is all the more reason to go to the committee of the whole and bring in the necessary people that we need to ask these questions and get them answered. But if that is the case, what all of the prior speakers have yet to cover and at least acknowledge is that there is a chance that because the government has agreed to the rates, that they will be liable for the premiums associated with those three. So does this in addition add on top of that? So really, the savings that now this bill claims to have only just adds additional cost to it? There may be no savings at all. In fact, it just might cost twice as much. Who knows how much? Once again, more of a reason to bring in the committee of a whole to get the questions answered. So that's exactly what some of the questions that have yet to be asked or at least answered. And we need to get those answered. Now, one of the prior speaker had mentioned we talk about rushing into, this bill is rushing to save money. I'm not sure that that's accurate. It could end up actually costing us money, not saving us any money. So rushing to do so is irresponsible. And our people deserve, us deserve, at least at this body, tread lightly and do the due diligence and ask all the required questions and get the right answers so that we can make a good decision on this. You know, we go back to the whole idea that when we enter into good faith negotiations, that there is consideration, quid pro quo. I want to enter in a negotiation, I expect you to give me something, and that person should expect return. And basically, this is basically intervening in that process and just saying, ah, we negotiated in good faith initially, but we've changed our mind somewhere along the lines. What, how much confidence does that drive into the system? How much confidence does that give our vendors to do business with our government? It's extremely disappointing that we have come to this point because it's happened so many times in the past, and yet, we just continue to do the same thing. Now, there's also that question of separation of powers. And once again, let's bring the committee of a whole and let's get the AG in here to opine on it. We keep debating back and forth and accusing other senators of just catering to the governor. That's not true. Let's get the question answered by the Attorney General. What harm could come in actually asking our Attorney General to give a legal decision on whether or not this may violate that? What if we went forward and attempted to do it only to come back for the AG to finally opine on it and saying, it's a violation of the organic authority, take it out? What have we done? We've appropriated money, we've set high hopes for everybody only to find out that we can't do anything and further prolong the negotiating process for this health insurance? Surely, they're gonna come back with higher rates. You've just lost their credibility, we've just lost all credibility because we fell to negotiate in good faith the whole time. What level of confidence do they have that the next time will be different? There's none. There's no confidence. Then we talk about the the numbers itself. And I just want to refer back to the, I know that this document was provided by the Department of Administration. And we take, we went through great lengths, or I should say, prior speakers went through great length to point out the numbers themselves, but yet, they completely skipped over Section Five, which talks about the considerations. These are the assumptions behind the numbers. Right? And so, the considerations were that accept all negotiating team negotiated terms and rates as submitted. The second consideration, and once again, these are the assumptions behind the numbers that they're providing us. The numbers that have been referenced by all the prior speakers as some sense of savings or a perceived sense of savings. The second consideration is that it assumes that they maintain the ratio of current government and employee retire contributions for both the fifteen hundred and the two thousand plan. Now, I'm not, I don't know the technicalities of each of these plans, but I believe it's fair to say that I believe the two thousand plan costs more money, costs the government more money in premiums. So by assuming that you maintain the same level, the same ratio, that's what makes up these numbers that they're alluding to as a perceived savings. What if everybody chose the two thousand plan? All of the savings would disappear. It would cost more money, I believe. Once again, false hopes, false promises, because we don't know. They're based on assumptions. We don't know those assumptions. And yet, we're gonna go ahead and appropriate the potential ten million dollars in premium savings predicated on these assumptions that are unknown. Is that physically responsible? I don't believe so. There's another consideration here regarding the, there's several other considerations as well. But once again, I think the argument is that when you talk about these numbers, let's make sure that the public knows that they're based on certain assumptions and the realization of those assumptions are what is gonna drive the actual number. These aren't actual savings. They're forecasted based on these assumptions. And we're gonna appropriate based on that forecast. And it's my understanding that we're attempting to appropriate all of the perceived savings or at least the ten million of it. And I don't believe that that's responsible. So Mr. Speaker, once again, the three issues. Are we basically destroying the good faith of negotiating process within our government to all of our vendors? This doesn't just have ramifications on our healthcare providers. It's have ramification on the entire business community that would otherwise do business with the government. We talk about the separation of powers and we talk about whether or not the decision that we make here today could just end up being thrown out. We talk about the savings, the perceived or forecasted savings, yet we conveniently gloss over all of the assumptions that predicate or that come to the realization of this forecasted savings. And the public should know, the taxpayers should know what we're doing. Is accepting those assumptions as fact and then appropriating it based on a forecast only to potentially pay more? And then, once again, whether or not these notice of awards that have been sent out are gonna bind us and make us liable for the premiums associated with those three on top of going with an exclusive provider? It's a question that needs to be asked. Because it may. And then, this whole appropriation is for not, because there's no savings at all. Absolutely none. In fact, it'll cost more. So I encourage my colleagues to not make it an issue about politics and whether it's the legislature and the governor or whatever. The facts speak for themselves. Let's call the committee as a whole in and get the numbers answered so that we can really evaluate the bill as it is. And let's get the AG to opine on the separation of powers so we make sure that we're not doing all of this for nothing. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator McCready?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, this morning when I came in, I wanted to listen to all the arguments that was presented before us. Obviously, we didn't know what we were gonna be arguing about. But but when you listen to the arguments that has happened here today, whether you raise your voice and pump your fists in support or whether you have a different approach to get your message across, the bottom line is, we all support our manomko. We all support hay raises. You know, you kind of feel like you're forced to defend yourself in here sometimes rather than talk about the issues. I'm a member of the McCready family. My wife Dina's the boss, not the governor. Not anyone else. Nobody leads me around. Nobody leads me around by the nose. I look at myself in the mirror every night. Did I make a difference for the people of this island? Can I do a better job? Absolutely. Every day, each one of us can do a better job so the quality of life for our seniors and the people of this island can get better. But throwing grenades doesn't help anyone because when the grenade explodes, everyone gets hit by shrapnel. So the question isn't, who supports our Manumco? Or who supports our government employees? We all do. The question is, what are we doing to get them closer to the 1800? What did we do today to get them closer to 1800? That's the question. The question is, and this health insurance bill, and we could sit here all day and say, "He said, she said." But is that what leaders do? I've been on this job for eight months. And they don't do that. We don't sit here and argue until 5:00 and go home and accomplish nothing. But that's what we're doing. We continue to go down the same road every single session. And then, we tell the people of this island what's best for them when we don't even do our jobs every single day better? We need to get better before we can tell anyone else to get better. We have some very smart, intelligent people in this legislature who we need advice from. We need guidance. So stand up and guide and lead. All we do is argue and get nowhere. But I have not heard anyone from either side. And you know, I'll take full responsibility for this if I have to. No one's ever called for a caucus between the entire 15 of us. Are we too good of a body to get together in a room and come out with a solution? Am I ignorant to the process? That we cannot do that, that we're just going to keep throwing grenades back and forth? And affect everybody in this body? Can we not do that? So publicly, I'm going to call for a caucus of common sense and compromise between the 15 of us. And if I'm naive in saying this young senator has no clue what he's talking about, then let me know if that we cannot come together as 15 people in one body and caucus for common sense. Because after all, Mr. Speaker, it's all about common sense. We are not far off in the numbers. We are definitely not at all off on who we want to support. And I'll say it again. And I'll personalize this. I live in a house with my in-laws, or they live with me now, that get the $1,100 cola. I see it every day, the people that take my kids to school. My daughter sleeps with senior citizens in their bed. I understand. Do I want them to get that 1,800? Absolutely. What are we doing to get them that? Nothing. We don't have eight votes. We're a minority. They don't have 10 for the override. What are we going to do about it? Are we going to keep throwing grenades at each other and get nowhere? And then, on the 29th of September, while we collect paychecks no matter what? Put the government in jeopardy of not being funded? Is that what we're going to do? Are we going to do this over and over and over again? You call that leadership?
Point of information, Mr. Speaker. If Senator McCready wants it all to end, all he has to do is vote yes.
Well, and that's what I'm talking about. All you have to do is vote yes. It's that simple. All you have to do is vote no. You know, but like I said, he's in eight months. He's been here the same amount of time as I, the good senator from Talafofo. Maybe he should do more listening than talking, and then we could come together as a group. And then, we could find a solution. God gave us two ears and one mouth. That means he told us to listen twice as much as we talk. And now, we have this health insurance contract. What are we going to do with this? We can't even balance a budget. We can't even come to a compromise on the budget. And now, we have this. So, Mr. Speaker, I hope this is not me naive, but I'm going to publicly call for a caucus of the 15 of us. And if we can't come to a compromise and we can't find a solution for the people outside or the people at GovGuam agencies right now working, then there is something wrong with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Speaker Wapet, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Gosh, I don't even know where I want to begin. So let me check my notes here. There are three things. One is, the very first thing I think I should do is just take it from the very beginning when a question was asked, like, "What is the rush?" And, you know, of course, this should go through the whole process of either Committee of the Whole or public hearing. And then, there are mechanisms all the time to be able to deal with these things. And the rush basically is, or the urgency in which this is being done, is that there is no contract. A contract hasn't been signed yet. And if it was signed, then we wouldn't be where we are today because then it would have been too late. And then, the whole question, if you want to bring in, and it was brought up, the whole question that was sent to the Attorney General to get an opinion, was actually where the question was specifically to that, which is basically interfering with the authority of the executive branch to enter contracts or to reject proposals. But that's not what this bill actually is doing. And Senator Respeja was very correct. If you read further on in the opinion by the Attorney General, he stated, yes, what the rights are and authority of the executive branch is. But he's also stated that the legislature, yes, has the plenary or absolute power over appropriation and it may attach conditions upon the expenditure of appropriated funds. Bill, this bill, 174, is doing just that. And then, another question was brought up, or a statement was made, is that this bill is already making an appropriation without a budget. And for some of us, maybe it's been in here too long, I guess, or longer than others. There are many different ways in which, of course, budgets have been passed. One is that you can take exactly what it is that the governor submitted down. No question whatsoever, no amendments to it. That's one way. The other is, the legislature, of course, have received the bill, could then amend it, do make some substitutions of that bill, that budget bill. The others, another way again, is that there could be continuing appropriation. And I don't think we want to go down that route. The other is, you can do a month-to-month appropriation, a budget, to run the government. And then, last of all, of course, if we can't, and God forbid, that that never really happens, is that then we shut down the government because we don't have a budget. So there are many different ways of doing this. And this, you can start setting priorities that maybe this is what we want to do. And the way the budget has always been prepared is that we have revenues. We state where the revenues are. And a statement was made is that this whole idea of where this money is coming from are forecasts, projections. Well, how have we been doing the budget? Based on forecasts and projections. And sometimes, yes, we want to be a little bit more conservative. Sometimes, yes, we want to say we want to go a little bit lower than what the governor is doing. Other is, when you consider, and it's not an exact science, but Senator Respeja introduced this bill to bring in the experts, bring in the classified individuals, people who work with monies, to come and give us an idea, give this legislature an idea of how monies are coming in and how then we're going to be making these projections. That's the best so far that we've done because this is not an exact science. And it's all a forecast. It is a projection. And then, of course, that's what the numbers are saying here. But then again, who are we going to trust? So with the SES, we're trusting these professionals, these experts. And in this case, when it comes to this particular projection or analysis of what the negotiation is showing, it says that the memo that was attached on the Hague Group is attesting to the fair and reasonableness of all negotiated, final negotiated rates. And then, a letter, of course, from the director herself, basically, not so much in terms of really taking one position or the other, but stating the facts, stating what the possibilities are. So that, those are just some of the things that, you know, I think needs to be thrown out. Then, there's the argument about, well, yes, and I was one of those who supported, for choice. And I'm no economist, granted, but I've always heard, you know, people say this, economists say this, is that, yes, if we have choices, if we have competition, it should drive the prices down. But the choice we have here now, after looking, and granted, yes, I still feel the same way about that. I like to rely on the experts. But now, I'm looking at the analysis of experts, and now I want to make a choice. I want to make a choice. We are going to make a choice here for the government of Guam employees and the retirees. And the choice is, do I want us to pay $74 million? Or do I want us to pay $79 million? Now, just looking at the numbers logically and financially, definitely, I would go for the $59 million versus the $74. And by doing that, by doing, yes, an all-in exclusive, there would be this savings of $18.7 million. $10 million, $10.7 million of that will be a savings to the government. And we all talk about how we want to save this government money. Well, here's an opportunity to be able to do that. There's a savings of $8 million, I'm sorry, the $10.7 is not just the government, is the entire taxpayers of this island. That's the savings. But to the individual employees, when we take all of the employees and all of the retirees, it's $8 million. Now, if you go the other route, of course, where, yes, you know, and I understand the caveat here, that if we went with the choices of Carrier 1, 2, and 3, the range is anywhere between $22 million to $26 million, taking it, of course, up to $73.3 million. There's the caveat that now each one of them must have, one-third of them registered then and enrolled in that particular program. Now, granted, we can't predict that. We don't know. I guess if we did not have, right now, this whole idea that should we go with 1, and there'll be all that savings, and just looking at the numbers, there's the $22.8, $23.5, and $26.9. So maybe, just logically, again, when you look at the numbers, I think everybody would jump to Carrier number 1 or A because it's $22.8. So I'm thinking, there could be some savings there again. So the choice is, of course, like I said earlier, $74 million or $59 million that the taxpayers will be paying overall through an appropriation and with a savings of 8.7, savings of $18.7 versus having to go then with those other choices and then we'll have only $1 million savings. Now, I have to, and I have to say this as well, is that, so when we say, "Why this bill?" Well, for several reasons, I think, and this is just for me. Of course, I can't speak for anybody. But if we don't have this bill and we do nothing, then every taxpayer will be paying more. If we do nothing or don't have this bill, then we'll eliminate the availability of the Medicare Supplement Plan. If we do nothing, we'll forego any reduction that the retirees and the government of Guam would have. So by passing this bill, the opposite now, is that it will provide a Medicare Supplement Plan. And like several of us in here, I mean, I know there's none of us who are here yet, but we will get there to the age of 65, where now then we'll be able to participate in this plan. But then, for those who are in the plan, we're helping them. We're providing an opportunity. We're making it available for them by going with this plan. By going with this bill and passing this bill, it will reduce the cost for every retiree. 800 of them is my understanding, who are currently in that plan. Now, we're going to allow them to continue to be in that plan. And if we pass this bill, it'll provide an overall annual savings to the taxpayers and the government of Guam. $18.7 million compared to having to pay $74.5 million. So, yes, I realize that, and it's so easy to throw that at somebody else. And I'll be the first to stand up here, like, hopefully, with everybody else too. Is that granted, there is the idea and the support for choices. But when it comes to the pockets of our people, I would backtrack. I would take a step back. And I would look, and I would make the choice now that what is best for our retirees, what's best for our GovGuam employees, what's best for the entire taxpayers? And that choice would be then, is to go at the lower cost, which is, yes, the exclusive choice. And that can't be wrong. No matter what position we take, that can't be wrong because it's right. It's the right thing to do for everybody all the way around. And that's what we, that's basically all we can do. Is try to do the best thing, the right thing for our people. And this is the right thing. So we want to budget, and the way we budget is, yes, we put in the top exactly what our total revenues are, forecasts, projections. And even before we start to appropriate to anybody, we try to take care of other obligations. So we set aside the money for all our obligations, our bond obligations. Everything that we've borrowed, we put that all aside. And that's how we budget ourselves at home as well. We pay mortgage payments. We want to pay our power bills. We want to make sure we have food. We want to pay our water bills before we think of all the other stuff. But what has this legislature and past legislatures have always said that's very important, is health, education, and public safety. And what is this bill all about? Health insurance for our people. So, yes, this is a priority. And, yes, we're making the health of our people come first. And this is the first appropriation because we have not passed any budget bill. We have not appropriated anything or put monies aside for anything else, but rather for the health of our people. And I used to always have an argument with a former colleague of ours, who is now the CEO of a bank, who is a nurse and fights for the health of our people. And I'm an educator. CEO of a bank, who is a nurse and fights for the health of our people, and I'm an educator. And the argument between she and I was that she would say, health comes first, because without health, you can't be educated. And then I would say, well, education comes first, because if we teach you to eat healthy, if we teach you to exercise, if we teach you all of this, then you will be healthy. So I knew, of course, that that's a no-brainer in terms of the arguments here that we have between she and I, and we would joke about it. But ultimately, yes, it's health. And if you look at the amount in which, of course, this bill is appropriating for the retirees, and let's not forget, because we're all going to be retirees, we're all going to reach, I'm hoping, that we're all going to be 65 years of age and older, so we can all see our grandchildren and great-grandchildren. We're going to be there. And I've always been a believer of this, that how we take care of our manamko, how we take care of our children, is a reflection of who we are as a society. And if we can't take care of those who are the most vulnerable, then we are in a really, really sad state of affairs. And I hope that that's not where we're going, because that's what makes, I believe, our people, our culture, and all those who've stayed here and lived here and called these their homes, love that about us, as a people and our culture, is that we take care of our own. So with that, I do then rise in support of Bill 174. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me an opportunity to speak on Bill Number 174-32. Mr. Speaker, I most emotionally charged almost three hours, I think, maybe two and a half hours. And what I want to do is try to do something that certainly you and a couple of others in this hall have taught me in the last three years, and that really is to focus in on what the issues are. I can be quite emotional, but when I sit and I listen to you and a couple of others in here, and they do their business, it's real clear to me that you focus in on what the laws and the processes and the procedures are, and you always go back to that. Certainly, you and some others here can become emotional, there's no doubt about that as well, but I've always, in my head, I've defined that as being passionate about what you're trying to drive. And one of the things that I've learned in my brief three years is about the integrity of process. And so when we were first called in, and I did, I did it on the record, but I did say, how did we waive the public hearing requirement for this? I was a little concerned about that, because in the last three years, that requirement always stood. But that being said, we're here, but I was curious about that. And then another part of the process was, as somebody stood up and said, whether it's 59 million or 74 million for the health insurance, we're not telling the governor what to choose. But honestly, Mr. Speaker, in that appropriation in itself, it really will influence which contract we're going to go for, because that's the appropriation. But I think the biggest concern for me, Mr. Speaker, and really, it's something that you've dwelled into my head over and over again, is the whole process of procurement. And I just, I just wonder why there's a hesitation to have a committee in the hole, and to ask the people, what would this do? What does this mean? Were notices of awards sent out? If we decide this appropriation today and it's signed into law, what will that do to that? Will there be appeals? Will that cost us? If the exclusive contract is take care, and I don't know, because I really don't know, if it is take care, and as we know, the courts have decided to support their branch of take care, but they're not going to include the retirees, what would that mean if the exclusive person or company is take care of which we might appropriate 59 million or 74 million, whichever it is? What will that mean? I don't know. And I think those are questions, and I'm not shirking from my responsibility to appropriate, I'm not shirking away from the courage to stand up and say what I think. That's not what that is, but, Mr. Speaker, I think you've taught me well enough that the devil is in the details. And even at the end of the day, at the end of the session, at the end of the issue, you know, that's a good decision, you've already taught me, the devil is in the details. How did you get there? And will something come back to bite you if you didn't go over all those details? And I'm just saying what several of you have taught me. The crafting of policy is critical, is important, and the process has to have integrity. We are our own branch. I can make my own decisions. Nobody's been holding my nose. But I have learned, the devil is in the details. The decisions need to be well thought out, and you can answer all these questions, and those questions are, everything is fine, not going to lose any money, the pills aren't going to kick us back. I mean, I am so happy that everybody is putting families first. Probably, the only other thing that would make me happier is if we found a way to give annuities to survivors of those children with disabilities who are our beneficiaries. But I'm getting so much pushback about that, even though I've paid in, but I'm told conflict all over the place. And I know someone's going to stand up and say, stick to the bill. So I will. And it really is, for me, Mr. Speaker, the integrity of the process, the devil is in the details. And what are the answers? This process has gone so far, what does it mean? We're going to make an appropriation, does that really make the governor's hand heavy towards something? If it doesn't, it doesn't, but it seems to me it might, because that's the only amount of money we're going to give them. If the exclusive contract is take care, what would that mean for our retirees? I don't know. I don't know. But I am posing it, and again, process has to uphold integrity, because the means to the end really is important. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita.
We've exhausted the list, so I'm going to go to the author to close. Speaker Peng, you may.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank, for once, I guess, all of my colleagues who had concerns for expressing those concerns. Nothing's more frustrating than having nobody say anything, and then just vote on the bill without any opportunity to engage in dialogue that allows us to clarify the positions that we take on this floor. So it really is hardening for me, even though there's opposition and concern raised in the arguments given about what we're trying to do here, it just builds for me a more solid process and a more clear and definitive intention that we can push before the governor and anybody else that is concerned with what we're trying to do here. First, I want to clear up, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding any other comments by any other speaker, we are not dictating here any choice at all. What we are doing is exercising our legislative authority to appropriate money for government expenditure, and in this case, it happens to be for the procurement of a health insurance plan for the government of Guam employees. Pure and simple, we're not doing anything. If the governor may be influenced going one way or the other, let him be influenced on his own initiative. But all we are doing is saying that when we look at the statutes and the laws and what our responsibility is with regards to procuring a health insurance program for our government of Guam employees and retirees, the standard that we set in statute is that we fund and appropriate money to the most economical and beneficial program for our government of Guam employees, retirees, and their families. And that's what this bill does. It provides, based upon information, public information provided to us by the Department of Administration headed, who manages and supports the Health Negotiating Committee. We are not dealing with any secrets here, Madam Speaker, and there was some, you know, kind of innuendo that where did these numbers come from? Every single number that you find in this bill is from the document that was publicly provided to this body as required by law and as approved by the Attorney General's representative on the Health Negotiating Committee, that the legislature is supposed to be privy to that information by January, July 30th, for the formation of the annual budget. I know that many of our colleagues referred to an Attorney General opinion that said, my God, you are interfering with the authority and the function of the executive branch. Well, Madam Speaker, there's an additional Attorney General opinion dated August 12, 2013, and the contention was, did the statute that had the words for final approval meet the test of the separation of powers? And the Attorney General had ruled from the earlier memo that, no, it does not. And therefore, that section of the statute that says for final approval has been struck from that statute. In effect, the Attorney General opinion struck 4302(c), the phrase for final approval. Once that has been struck, then this is consistent, then, the statute that requires that the information be given to the legislature before, for its consideration for its annual budget, this is then consistent with the purpose of Public Law 30-227, which states in part, Section 1, that the government of Guam will be burdened with expending monies as much as $17 million for an unfunded obligation which is in direct contravention of accepted budgeting and financial management standards of the government of Guam. It is the intent of the legislature, through the Health Insurance Transparency Act of 2010, to ensure that health insurance negotiations reflect the most economical and beneficial health plan that provide the requisite medical care needs and services for the government of Guam employees and their families. As well, throughout this act, the obligations of the approval of health insurance benefit shall be known prior to the open enrollment, as the process is brought into the standards of conformance with the annual budget process of the island. It further states, Madam Speaker, in this Attorney General opinion, and I'm reading this, because there are two Attorney General's opinions, and we keep asking for guidance, and for the Attorney General, we don't need him, he's right here. This is what we now have to decide for ourselves, based on what he has written, and guide our actions, whether or not we think we're exercising proper authority within this. He says, "The statutory scheme, once the requirement for final approval of the legislature is struck, is consistent with the type of cooperation that is required between the executive branch and the legislative branch in order for both branches to conduct and complete their organic functions." See in Ray Geteris, 2002, Guam 55, where the Supreme Court of Guam is analyzing whether a legislative enactment was an imposition upon executive function states. Section 11(c) of Bill 405 would be constitutionally proper if the legislation action was necessary to further a statutory scheme requiring cooperation between two branches, and such actions have no substantial potential to interfere with the exclusive branch functions or alter statute purposes. With the inorganic language of Public Law 30-227 struck out, the remaining provisions of the law are an excellent example of legislative action that is necessary to further a statutory scheme requiring cooperation between the executive branch, legislative branch. This is the case in the transmission of information necessary for the effective completion of the budgetary process of the legislature. So, Madam Speaker, while we can read all the Attorney General's opinion and come, we have another one that says, we are within our proper right to receive that information that was publicly transmitted to us by the negotiating committee as required by statute in order for us to appropriate the necessary money to effectuate the execution of a contract by the executive. And that's all we're doing in this bill, appropriating the necessary money to effectuate the effective completion of a contract by the executive branch in which they have the authority to contract for services. Now, if the governor decides that he wants to contract for services over and above the appropriation provided by this body, then we have to go back, and he has to go back, and identify where that additional resource is going to come from. It doesn't interfere with his ability to make one choice or the other choice. All it does is, if he makes a choice that is going to expand beyond what is appropriated by this body, the governor then is making that choice, and he has to find then, within the budget, identify additional resources necessary to meet the contract, the obligations of the contract he entered into, with finding additional resources, finding additional appropriation authority. That's all. So, Madam Speaker, that's what this does. That's all this bill does. In addition, Madam Speaker, you know, there was criticism, my God, you know, the Senator Fabregas wanted choice, now he doesn't want choice. Madam Speaker, I authored a bill that would have provided another process of implementing procurement of health insurance program. It allowed for non-exclusive invitation for bid, in which we cap the cost that we want to spend. So already, I was making a choice. If this is what we want to spend, then this is what you have to bid at. Now, people didn't agree that that's the process we should go. So we went back to what is originally existing in statute, and that is, another statute I had authored, that allowed for both exclusive and non-exclusive. In the past, we all went exclusive, we never would have solicited a proposal for non-exclusive. So all I said was, we will have a choice. We will have a choice of whether going with exclusive or going with non-exclusive, depending on the cost. And when the governor said, that's the process he wants to go with, and all my colleagues in here agreed with the governor, and not giving enough votes to override the other process of going through the IFB, then the choice is, where do you want to go? Once you get these proposals of exclusive and non-exclusive, you compare them, you decide which is the most economical and beneficial program to enter into, for the purpose of providing health insurance to our government employees and retirees, then we make a choice, then he makes the choice. Well, the choice we find ourselves in today is an $18 million choice. And do we choose to fund the most economical and beneficial program for government of Guam employees and the retirees that save them $18 million and the taxpayers? That's the choice. It's not whether you're going to take one carrier or the other carrier. To me, that's the choice we have to make. That's the choice, that the process, that the governor says he wants to keep in place. It was the governor who said, don't exclude the opportunity to go exclusive. I thought, maybe we should do that, but the governor said, no, I want to be able to have the opportunity to receive both exclusive and non-exclusive, and then make a choice. Well, he has that choice, and we have a choice of what we think is going to be and should be the most economical and beneficial program that we can buy for our employees and our retirees, that will save them money and provide them greater benefits. And the choice we're making is a funding of 59 or 55 million dollars, so that we can make that choice. And if the governor chooses to go another way... And if the governor chooses to go another way, he has to find additional money. You know, I got my colleagues in here that get up and say, "My God, I support the retirees. I want to go from $1,500 to $1,800, but we don't have the money." Madam Speaker, we had, in the bill that the governor vetoed, $1,800 for the retirees. The governor said, "No way, we can't afford it." So he says, "I'm going to veto that bill that gives $1,800 to the retirees because we can't afford it." He sends down a new bill yesterday, and we debated that bill. Madam Speaker, the bill that we had, that had $1,800 for the employees, I mean, for the retirees, to take them back to 2008 purchasing power dollars, that bill, Madam Speaker, that he vetoed, that had $1,800, compared to the bill yesterday that everybody in here says, "My God, it was so physically responsible, we got to support this." That bill yesterday spends $20 million more, $20 million more than the bill that he vetoed. Is that physically responsible? How could my colleagues get up and say, "I don't want to support that bill that spends $20 million less, that has $1,800 for the retirees? I don't want it because it's irresponsible. But I want to support a bill that spends $20 million more but cuts the retirees down from $1,800 to $1,500." And then get up and say, "I support the retirees, I want to give you $1,800." My God, you guys were talking to the governor yesterday, to all of the people that he sent down here to talk to you and discuss it. Couldn't you convince him? Governor, you want to spend $20 million more, couldn't we just keep the retirees at $1,800? Because that's only $2 million of the $20 million we want to spend more. Couldn't we just help the retirees? Couldn't you listen to us and help us, support our retirees, and give them $1,800? Because your bill spends $20 million more than the bill that had $1,800 for the retirees. But no, no. Because that's not the priority. We want to get up and say, "We support you." But when we have $20 million more to spend in a bill that was given to us by the governor yesterday, we cut the retirees. How far man da la staino? Staino vera staino diin su tu no, bengatibu staino? How far no bedengas ti man omko? Ni manis sita para umana siguru na nachung para prescription? Ti para candis ti pumafan? Ti candi pumafan prescription? Omut? Ningkanu? Uga posi candit sa manis sita ear kon sa? Iti sini ma mansempai pi sa i hinagung zan offasya? Ni ma eniki? Madam Speaker, it's the matter of the priorities. You know, my colleague said, "Let's call in, let's..." We don't have enough questions. What's it going to do if we appropriate this amount of money? How's it going to interfere with the... We want to call in the procurement people to tell us what's happening in the procurement, and we're not saying that's the... That is what will cause the protest. That is what will interfere with the procurement process. It's to call these people in to tell us what's happening. I'm not concerned with what's happening. I'm concerned with providing the resources necessary and the appropriation to meet the cooperative nature of the executive branch function and the legislative branch function once we have already disposed of the issue of, do we have authority as a legislative body for final approval or contract? I'll concede to the AG, no, we don't. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, that's why even though I am a statutory member of the negotiating committee, last year and this year, I did not attend those meetings because I don't believe it is my place as a legislator to go and inject myself into the negotiating process as a member of the negotiating team. That's why I did not go to those because I made my own decision based on my understanding of the separation of powers, that as a senator in here who has the authority to approve funding for these, that I shouldn't be in there participating in that executive function. And that's why you did not see me attending any of those because I knew I had to separate myself on the separation of powers issue. So in terms of injecting myself into the contracting process, I took myself out of that process. But I'm not going to take myself out of the process of what is clearly, clearly the legislative authority, Attorney General opinion, what is our organic function? Appropriation. And I will appropriate, based upon the public information given to us by the negotiating team as indicated by the Attorney General, that we have a right to that information for the development of the budget in FY 2014. That that information rightly should be given to us not for the purpose of approving a contract, but for the purpose of the development of the statutory scheme needed to ensure an efficient and effective budgetary process. And that's what we're doing here, Madam Speaker. Lo vera de nonae, Madam Speaker. Tolu dustino i hajgi gaigi organic act power? I question gi ni pa nipataatanae? Is anginestane tasabai no she na question? I organic act power kodi nansi padlatsi? How far? How far pa tatoegui? Tanasi guru? Nataspia zatano i ginagauii peautauta? Parewa zani empiau? Iritirau? Ifamiliania? Zani taxpayers of Guam? Zataimanu tatoegui ti itoogta gui ni? Ni para tanoi i ginagagoniya? Zatana siguru nagwaha? Pus isti gi nae? Na leleka? Ani lenya gubenu thaja salapi pa tinahung salapi? Zan lenya stixay manu gatsongo gui ni na? Na tinahung salapi ni para ta'adzuda imanomko? Lo ani gaigi edji i biu? Ni tapasa gui ni? Zagaigi gui na tasini ta'adzuda imanomko? Zatano i ni kola niya nae? Ni mid otsusiantus? Para ta'pegaha toti gi? Dos mid otsu na sokan? Ni marisisibi gui? Po gu ti para tanoi ba pe? Para tanoi ya edzi i mid otsusiantus? Ani gaigi gi zota biu? Zedji gi gaigi zan lenya gubenu? Ti sini biu vitusti ta' satinahung? Satinahung para imanomko? Lo ani ana fotu toti? Inwebu na biu ginigap? Zau atan? Ahotsai gubenu i para ugasta? Gi executive branch gi? Gui zanu i umananea? Ahotsai ginasta? Danti midzon? Zahafer? Lo zat? A utut i $1,800? Papa gi $1,500 satinahung salapi? How far na da lai zat? Zatos mita, Madam Speaker, I mean, dos midzona, Madam Speaker, i pomfotu gi $1,500? Hulu gi 18? Lo atsuli gubenu? Danti midzon mas? Zagaasta gi siya gui oturu god? Zaa utut i $1,800? Papa gi 15? Kau eno nae? Na para tafangawalu gui ni zan lekta? O ta saputama imanomko sa tarispete toduun tai gui ni? Lo tinahung salapi? Lo no i du danti midzon zabi no i biu poti she i pumalu she? Da lai zat ti sini? Ta kapuna dididik, dididik, dididik? Zan nahung sempriji $1,800? Ti leleka tu du pa ta tsuli? Ti leleka tu du pa tanoi? Adumi ditia? Tai gi bo nae nigapani lenya i gubenu? Ani kahulu i vice speaker zan lenya? La ni manis ti koti? Mauli kistina programai drokward? Zaa i biu nigap ni abitu gubenu? No, a utut? Zanisita shod? Quatu, quatu, you know? Quatu centus mid? Tanisita tai guiya? Ashode gubenu? Boom, lenya langa tsuli? Kapun fan no dos centus mid gi ni ni ofisinal? Kapun nu nu nebisantu mid? Gi ni ni BSP zan ekua talu gi ni mani pumalu? Tai ya? Pus guan? Danti midzon? Pro gasta newebu? Zados midzona tanisita para tanasi guru na sini tanoi imanomko $1,800? Ni moon mas ya dos biu? No, zo kapuna dididik tsuli gi lo dididik tsuli gi lo? Tsuli midzon? Motua unrotu tua? Lo timalagu? How far na? How far po ni naputi niya i gubenu? Zan stixay manu gatsongo gui ni? Ni para inkapun dididik zuzen nai imanomko? How far na? Na man? Eni korason midzu man sen mahituka? Pre mbaba pasti imanomko? Da lai gatsu? Na fan magim fan i korason midzu zan spia? Zapa rofa na para pura tanoi palobra? No, ifan ni akson? Tinahung i palobra? Tiufinaha ni palobra na usopopot? Ti zan malagu zubi noio? Tiufinaha ni amut? Nisitsita i akson? Nisitsita i butumu? Nisitsita no alukhungan? No, ifan talu dididik? Ti megagai? Madam Speaker, I'm going to close. Once again, reiterating that the call for the Attorney General is right here. He's right here. He has two opinions, and we can reconcile those opinions by ourselves, based upon what we understand and what we read. We don't need him to come in here anymore. It's very clear. We just have to make a decision. The details are in the memos. So we just have to read them, decide for ourselves whether or not we're acting within our organic act powers in terms of what this bill is seeking to do. We want to call in the negotiating committee and ask? I don't believe that's the best way to go because, as people say, we don't need that information to exercise our power of exercise, trying to determine and put into a bill and our actions to be guided by the statutory requirements of law that allow us to do so of appropriate money for the procurement of services for health for our government of Guam employees and the retirees in the most economical and beneficial way as required by our laws. And the governor, if he decides to change that direction and not move in that direction, then he has the organic act obligation of then identifying the additional resources to go the other way and requesting the legislature to fund that. Or else, if the bill passes as we have, then he has the transfer authority and the flexibility in the lump sum budget to move money around to meet those obligations. So we're not infringing on his authority or impinging and restricting his options. He just then has to manage the money, given the authority given to him in the statute that we will pass that gives him the authority to transfer to meet the obligations, as he did with the merit bonus when he said, "I want to pay that obligation, and I can find the resources to do so, and I will." And he did. So if he decides to contract for a more expensive option on health insurance, then he has the authority within the budget that we will ultimately pass, I believe, because I still think that I could cooperate. And as a call for a caucus? I called on the governor. When he said, "Dead on arrival, I want to pay HEY," and so forth, I said, "Governor, give me a call. I'm willing to sit down with you to find a way to do that." And I am, as always, willing to sit with anybody in here. When I send the information out, you have a question? Let me know what it is, and I'll ensure that I respond to it, and I tried to respond to the questions that were given to me. When I got a request to include funding, you know, they're saying, "We should all work together." Madam Speaker, I got emails from members of the minority saying, "Can you include this in the budget?" And we did. And we put it in there as the governor rightly mentioned, though, in his outlining his letter. And I thought, "Hey, we're working together." Until it's time to vote. And to me, the distinguishing factor in those votes were, are we going to provide enough money for our tax refunds so we don't fall behind? Are we going to provide for the HEY study that is fair and equitable so that it cannot be exercised in a discriminatory manner? And are we going to provide for imanomko? And those were the only three questions. It wasn't all the other stuff that we incorporated at their request. It's those three fundamental issues. And in all of those things, unfortunately, our colleagues said, "No, we don't want to do that. We don't want to put in enough money for tax refunds at $120. We don't want $1,800, and we don't want to provide $10.9 million for HEY." Because everything else, everybody agrees on. So it is those three issues that we have to continue to work on, Madam Speaker. And I will continue to work with anybody on those issues. So, Madam Speaker, before I close, I'd like to make one amendment, Madam Speaker. And just to be clear, that the appropriations that would, that are contained in this bill are coming from the FY 2014 budget. So the amendment I would have is, throughout the bill, amend general fund to read fiscal year 2014 general fund revenues. And throughout the bill, amend special funds to read fiscal year 2014 special funds. So I would like to offer that amendment, Madam Speaker.
Armed amendment? No objections? So ordered.
And Madam Speaker, once again, I really, really wish that what we did today, where every single member got up, voiced their concerns, expressed their thoughts, which gives an opportunity for honest, open, and transparent dialogue. And we can't hide behind our silence. I truly appreciate that and ask for that same kind of dedication to the process that we have in here on all other bills in this hall, regardless of whether we agree with them or not. And I want to thank my colleagues for sharing all of their thoughts and their concerns. Thank you, and to this mercy.
You're welcome, Mr. Speaker. So on the motion, I intend to send 174-32 LS if they're reading file without any objections? So ordered. Senator Rispia, will you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we now would say the House rules that we proceed to the voting file and that we vote on this bill with out engrossment.
Without engrossment?
Yeah. There was only two amendments that were made. The first amendment deleted the legislative findings, and the second amendment that passed The first amendment deleted the legislative findings, and the second amendment that passed was to recognize that it was going to come from FY two thousand and fourteen revenue. Madam Speaker, I'd like to motion for a recess.
And we're gonna take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that short, two-minute recess.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Rispichio, on a motion, please.
On a motion that we go ahead and proceed to the voting file, and that we vote without engrossment.
So we are now on the voting file, and that motion, it would be to go down to the voting file, to vote in the bill that's unengrossed, and just for everyone's, just to kind of reiterate what actually has happened, is that only section one of the bill has been deleted, and that the amendment throughout the bill, that the legal counsel, the clerks will reflect, is the change that all, that it be twenty fourteen general fund revenues and special, and special fund revenues also for twenty fourteen. Okay, so we are now, so with that, then, no objections, so ordered. We are now on the voting file, I'll ask the clerks if you can please read the title of the bill.
Bill number one seven four dash three-two LS, introduced by VC Pangolinan, RJ Rispichio, MF Houston Nicholas, JT Wampat EDD, TR Munya Barnes, BJF Cruz, TC Ada, FB Uggan Junior. An act making appropriations for medical and dental insurance premiums for employees of the executive and legislative branches, and for retirees of the Government of Guam for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
No.
Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Lim Tiyako.
Nay.
Senator Lim Tiyako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison.
Nay.
Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes.
Nay.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispichio. Senator Rispichio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker, I move that Senator Rodriguez be excused from session today.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay.
Bill number one seventy-four dash thirty-two LS, receive eight yea votes, six nays, and one excused absence. Bill number one seventy-four dash thirty-two LS is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispichio? You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recess, and we come back at two o'clock this afternoon.
We'll recess until two this afternoon. Minat Jantai Dos, Nalejas Lo Ton Guohan, is called to order. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, at the conclusion of the, the voting file, the next item on the agenda is item eighteen, and that's a brief extension of remarks.
Okay, so we are then on on the agenda, this is a rare opportunity, but it is on the agenda. Item number eighteen, and I've instructed the clerks that we will adhere to a five, the five minute, okay, whose phone is that, charge five dollars anyway. The other is, is five, I mean, five minutes, the clerks will time, and there's no yielding of the time, so if there's anyone who would like to speak, please indicate by raising your hand, and then I will start recording. Okay, all right, is there anybody else, so that I can okay? Anybody else, any more takers, I've got? It depends, okay, so right now, I will recognize Speaker Pangolinan, then I have Senator Siniklis. Or, and you're, as soon as you speak, your five minute starts.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, we continue to find ourselves looking for opportunities here in which we can do what we think is in the best interest of our people. And we all have different opinions on that, and what we're looking for is people making and offering solutions. Today, Madam Speaker, we had an opportunity to provide a solution, a proposal that was presented forward to this body, and this body acted on it. And so, Madam Speaker, this is the opportunity that we had with the passage of bill one seventy-four today, to provide an opportunity for the governor, who says there's not enough money in terms of making a decision that can provide additional money for this government, to put the things that are necessary into the resources available for next fiscal year to meet what we think are the priorities of this government. And for us, and for me personally, Madam Speaker, in the discussion of the whole budget process, it has been to ensure that we continue to meet our obligations to the taxpayers who basically lend this government money by overpaying their taxes, and when they file their taxes, that we have put away enough money to give them back their money in a timely manner. And the only way you can do that, Madam Speaker, is to make sure that you set aside enough in the provisions for refunds, and make those deposits so that the cash is in the bank. Even more so important with the district court order over us, but even more in that we don't have any other resources available to us, as we had in the past of borrowing money. And then, of course, meeting our obligations to the Manamku, Madam Speaker. And so, Madam Speaker, when we look at that, when we look at what the governor's proposing, and trying to find the resources to meet an obligation to our Manamku's that we've placed upon ourselves, certainly I've placed upon myself an obligation to find the money necessary, after ensuring that everybody else has been treated and given resources to help them make ends meet, that we haven't done so for our Manamku. And if we're able to find all of these things, to do all these things, if we're able to find twenty million dollars in additional expend, money to spend on government operations, why can't we find two more million dollars to take our Manamku from fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred? And so when we look at what has been brought to us as a solution, it doesn't resolve those issues. The hay study, I think, is, to me, very simple. The governor does not have to implement it fully, but we have an obligation to fund what is necessary, so that when the plan is approved, it is done fairly and equitably, and everyone can participate in having them lift up their ability to earn some more money so that they can continue to make ends meet for our families, all our hardworking families here on Guam, Madam Speaker. And so, we will continue to do that. We know that the governor has dug his heels in and, and sent down a bill. The one thing that baffles me is increasing spending by twenty million dollars, and not even addressing any of these issues. And I think there's an opportunity to take a look at where those are priorities, and kind of, as I said, take a little here and there, and resolve the issues that differentiate our positions and our priorities at this time, Madam Speaker. So I know that we will continue, certainly I will continue, Madam Speaker. You know, I got invited to speak to the association, to the executive branch. All of the ASOs and, and the controllers and the financial people by, within the executive branch of the Government of Guam, or the University of Guam, they called me in there and, and asked me to be the keynote speaker at their conference. And I went, I thought I was Daniel going to face the lions, you know, but I figured, you know, one of the things I said there was like, "You know what?" Because I had just lost my hair. I said, "During this budget that's coming up, I know I'm not gonna be pulling out my hair, because there's none left." Well, Madam Speaker, I find myself here with hair growing now, and having to pull my hair to try and find the place that we can be at in order to parcel out the resources of our government to meet our obligations and our priorities. And we'll continue to do that. I say, in the twenty years here, Madam Speaker, this is the first time that, under my direction, we have prepared five different budgets in four days. And we will continue to work at the Office on Finance and Budget to make sure that when we get those requests to try and incorporate things, we will do so. And we will then come back and try to present the opportunity then, to find that common ground, to ensure that Manamku's get taken care of, and that we meet our obligations to our taxpayers and the people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidus Massey. Senator Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in this session, we did a lot of good things. But I think the most important thing for us to reflect on at this time, and as we come to a close with a budget still to produce, is to evaluate what we've identified as priorities, and to make it very, very clear how we're going to address those priorities in the budget that we do finally pass. And so far, we have a tale of two budgets. We have the governor's budget that wants to spend eight hundred and eleven million dollars, and the legislature's budget that wants to spend seven hundred and ninety-seven million dollars. The governor wants to spend seven million dollars more in the general fund, he wants to spend six million dollars more in special funds, four hundred thousand dollars more in federal funds, and almost twenty million dollars more overall. And in the governor's priorities, in spending more than our budget, he wants to allocate more to agencies, he wants to hire more, he wants to give a little bit in hay and a little bit in cola. And he wants to do that with the promise that in the future, he's gonna make it whole, he's gonna pay more cola, pay more hay. But the reality is that you cannot spend eight hundred and eleven million dollars today, hire people, and have that same expense next year, and expect to be able to make good on that empty promise of paying more in hay and more in cola. The biggest empty promise is, see, you're gonna give a little bit now, pay you more later, but not spend less. And because he wants to spend more, he's already setting us up to say one thing and not deliver on it. On the opposite end of the aisle, or rather, across the street, down here at the legislature, we have a seven hundred and ninety-seven million dollar budget. And what we want to prioritize in this budget is finally making good on the promises of paying hay. Finally making good on the promises of taking care of our Manamku, and getting them their cola restored to what it was in two thousand and eight. We want to, in our budget, we want to put forward smart financial management tools to get merit bonuses paid out. We want to make sure that We want to make sure that money's going to be there for in-home bedridden adults to get taken care of. We want to make sure that money's going to be there for foster care support. We want to double the appropriation to our veterans, which wasn't in the governor's original bill. And we want to do that and spend less. We also have a provision in there for tax refunds that's $12 million more than the governor's stated estimate of $108 million. So he has a $12 million amount to be flexible with. And in the recently passed insurance bill, we further compromised, giving him even more money, $10 million more in savings. The governor says that we're not compromising, but it's the exact opposite. We're trying to meet his priorities of fiscal responsibility by spending less than what he's saying. We're trying to make good on our promises by paying our people what they're worth. We're trying to make good on our promises by paying our cola retirees. We're trying to make good on our promises of taking care of our veterans. We're trying to make good on our promises of merit bonuses where some got it and others didn't. And we're all trying to do this while spending less. And one of the biggest categories that we want to spend less in is we want to hire less. But you cannot go out and hire a whole bunch of people and then do another pay adjustment because it gets extremely expensive at that point. And so, Madam Speaker, as this tale of two budgets continues, as all of us here who have talked about fiscal responsibility move forward, we need to seriously think about what our priorities are. Are our priorities to go out and hire more? Or are our priorities going to be to go out and pay the working employees right now what they're worth? And I'll tell you right now, Madam Speaker, we can go to any government agency on this island and we can ask them, do you want us to hire more for your agency? We can ask the employees, do you want us to hire more for your agency? Or do you want us to finally pay you what you're worth? And I think the answer will be very obvious. So let's think about this as we end this session and as we prepare this next budget that's going to have to come out with all of these things on the table. And let's understand that our biggest priority is to fulfill our promises, to pay our people what they're worth, to take care of our Manamku, and to make sure that we're not overspending. That's what we originally proposed in our budget that was vetoed. That's what we originally proposed in our budget that we tried to override the veto with, and it didn't happen. So, Madam Speaker, I ask that we think about that as we move forward in the days ahead. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. I was wondering who's, who was ringing, whether them or you.
You better not find us.
That's why I was checking. Senator Yamashita, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the five minutes, and I probably won't take five. Of course, we want to proceed. Of course, we want to work with you. Of course, we want to work with everybody in here to craft a budget that will ensure that the operations of our government is stable, secure, and provides quality of life opportunities for all. That's what we want to do. And we will, we will. And we look forward to the dialogue and the conversation focusing on what we want to do. Madam Speaker, what I do ask is that we perceive a decorum. I left at the break and I got assaulted by a woman. And it really has to be because of all the energy that happened this morning. She first pushed away another senator, then when I went up to her, she physically pushed me away. And that's not a way for us to treat each other, Madam Speaker. It's not. It's not. The energy, the excitement, this is not the way we have to behave. We're all very passionate about what we think we're supposed to be doing. And we can arrive at those points in a very reasoned, calm, focused manner, Madam Speaker. We will do this together. We will. We are committed to working with you. But there has to be a sense of decorum. I ask you, Madam Speaker, for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to use their five minutes for extension remarks? How about you? No, so there's none. Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
We will adjourn, subject to the call of the speaker.